Good morning, it's 9:00 AM. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have a quorum. And Megan, Commissioner Harmon, wow. All right, like to call to order the Coastal Commission meeting of Friday, May 10th, 2024. I'd like to wish a very, very, very happy birthday to Commissioner Rice. Later, we will be having a performance with the Mike Wilson Band, performing Happy Birthday. All right, why don't we, we'll go through a roll call and virtual meeting procedures, and then I'll make a couple announcements regarding the agenda today.
Commissioner Akiri.
Here.
Commissioner Bajko.
Here.
Commissioner Calvin.
Here.
Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Conkle.
Here.
Commissioner Nadoff.
She's not here today.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Presente.
Chair Hart.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thanks so much. Let's move on to virtual meeting procedures.
All right, good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittal are available on the commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. A request to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 8:30 AM on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak only, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the internet, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call and number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes virtual hearing procedures.
Great, thanks so much. All right, I'd like to announce some changes today with the agenda, and then we'll go on to the actual Item 3 Agenda changes. Today, Item 7, Energy Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency will be trailed to the end of the meeting. So in other words, it will be, it will come after Item 14 and be the final item of the day. On that note, we'll now move to Agenda changes.
That's true.
Thank you and good morning Chair Hart, Vice Chair Escalante, and Commissioners. We have eight changes to the agenda today that are noted in the Agenda Changes Memo posted to our online agenda. First, under Item 7, the waiver application by Equinor Wind U.S. for seafloor survey activities offshore of San Luis Obispo County has been withdrawn. Next, Item 8A, the CDP Amendment Application by Morro Bay Oyster Company has been moved to consent. Next, Item 9A, the consistency determination by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for maintenance dredging of Channel Islands Harbor and Ventura County has been moved to consent. Next, Item 11A, an LCP Amendment by Ventura County for its water purification facility has been moved to consent. Next, Item 12A, a CDP application by the City of Galita for the Elwood Mesa Monarch Butterfly Program has been moved to consent. Next, Item 14A, a CDP application for the demolition and construction of a single-family home in Venice has been postponed. Next, Item 14B, a CDP application for the demolition and construction of a single-family home in Torrance has been postponed. And finally, Item 14C, a CDP application for the demolition and construction of a single-family home in Santa Monica has been moved to consent. This concludes the changes to today's agenda, and with that, we're at Item 4, Public Comment, and I will turn the mic back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll open general public comment. How many speakers do we have total?
We have 25 today.
Okay, because we have a short day in terms of Commissioners needing to leave and catch flights, we're going to restrict initially public comment to a half hour. We'll see how, how far we get, and then we'll determine how we're going to move forward. So let's open public comment and ask people to try to restrict their comments to potentially, why don't we give, we'll give two minutes, but hoping that people can keep it short. Thank you.
All right. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment for the first half hour. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attending mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your names in the order that they appear on our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips, there's a raise your hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you're using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star six, and please remember to state your name for the record. First up, we have three people in the room. We're starting with Sandra Jarabek, followed by Janet Gilbert, and then Michelle Driscoll. Sandra Jarabek.
Good morning, and you know, I didn't have an opportunity yesterday to thank you for all the incredible work that you're doing here in this area. And yesterday, we had such an incredible field trip, and I know that you were a big part of that. I heard afterwards, and I just wanted to sincerely thank you, my behalf and all my colleagues, for that and for everything you're doing. Just want to recognize your work.
Happy Friday. My name is Sandra Jarabek, and this is about Point St. George. That was an awesome project that you heard about yesterday, truly awesome. When you stood on that high knoll at Point St. George, did you know you were looking north? I think you knew, at almost 12 miles of beach in Talawood Dunes State Park and the Lake Grove Wildlife Area. As Sarah Christie said, "The beach and coastal trail go north from there all the way to the mouth of the Smith." You've been hearing about trucks, Jeeps, dirt bikes, ATVs, and motorcycles on this beach. I want to respond again to Commissioner Wilson's question, what can the commission do to help? At Point St. George, I wonder if you noticed the locked gate where the trail, it looks like a road, goes down to this beach. The county of Del Norte has a formalized program whereby for $10 a year, almost anyone can get a key to that gate to drive onto that beach, which goes 12 miles north. For the purposes of cutting firewood, gathering driftwood, commercial or sports fishing, this has included using chainsaws and trucks, and even some green trees. Enforcement is aware of this program. I want to say that you were also seeing a Peter Douglas Legacy Pre-C coastal Act, because in the 1970s, the legislature sent Peter up here to determine if more wetlands and dunes should be acquired on the North Coast and in Del Norte. And you were seeing the result. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Janet Gilbert.
Good morning. I'm going to read to you an abstract that I've left a copy of the document. Forty-year history of state complicity in the pesticide poisoning of California's wildest river. Forty years of regulatory indifference and delinquency of the Cal North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board toward prodigious applications of highly toxic pesticides at the Smith River Estuary. And the resulting pesticide contamination of estuary waters now threatens the survival of at least two aquatic species protected under the Federal Endangered Species Act. The Coho salmon is threatened, the tidewater goby is endangered. Both rely on Smith River for best habitat remaining to them as species in California. Since the early 1930s, the Water Board has, 1980s, excuse me, the Water Board has virtually ignored severe and ongoing contamination of the Smith River Estuary by the annual application of 300,000 pounds of agricultural pesticides used to produce Easter lily bulbs. The inundation of toxins has resulted in predictable and preventable violations of state and federal endangered species and clean water laws. Much of the land where lily bulbs are grown consists of seasonal wetlands, which retain their legal wetland status, yet receive from the state of California none of the mandated protections for wetlands by state and federal statutes. This is an ongoing problem. The results of the poisoning in the lower Smith River area are not limited to impairment of habitat that support Coho salmon and tidewater goby. Massive applications and bioaccumulation of pesticides impact the entire aquatic and terrestrial ecosystems of the Smith River Estuary and its tributaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final in-person speaker is Michelle Driscoll, and then we'll move on to Zoom participants, starting with Mary Jane Schram, Gail Johnson, and Rachel Wilson. Michelle Driscoll.
Good morning. I want to continue where Janet left off. We're very concerned about this. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. The, the key, that key species in critical habitats can be in such danger within the lowermost reach of California's cleanest, wildest river. At a time when loss of biodiversity has reached disastrous levels on a global scale is testament to the breadth of the state's dereliction. The current environmental crisis at the Smith River Estuary is a result not just of the pesticide applications themselves, but of the Water Board's refusal to enforce appropriate statutes and its near collusion with lily growers to evade state and federal laws. Residents of the small town of Smith River also suffer significant health impacts that appear to be directly tied to pesticides. Smith River is surrounded by Easter lily fields. In 2015, a toxicologist who examined the area stated his belief that the application of hundreds of thousands of pounds annually of fungicides, herbicides, insecticides, and metals to support local agriculture may also be causing deleterious toxic effects to nearby residents, who have reported contaminated well water, illness, and cancer. The following year, a community health assessment in Smith River demonstrated severe and widespread health impacts in the town, apparently caused by pesticides. This is being read from the abstract of the report, which you, I believe, have one copy of. And I urge you to look at this report. It's 40 years of data, 40 years of evidence, and this is a pretty horrendous situation. So I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Mary Jane Schram.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Mary Jane Schram for the Marin Audubon Society. This may be my last presentation to you for a while. Next slide, please. As you may have learned, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has determined that recent budget cuts will require the deferral to a later date of certain wildlife conservation efforts at its South Farallon Islands Field Station. Next slide. This funding shortfall will likely force a restructuring even of currently ongoing operations within the Farallon Islands National Wildlife Refuge. For over 50 years, the service and Point Blue Conservation Science have worked to restore its native species and condition, with Point Blue carrying out on-island research, monitoring, and restoration programs year-round. However, to sustain even current operations will require costly infrastructure repairs and improvements for the freshwater supply, the 1870s-era housing, sanitation, safety, and research needs. Next slide. We're advised that before the funding shortfall arose, the Fish and Wildlife Regional Office was prepared to issue its record of decision supporting the invasive mouse eradication plan. But being a special project, the plan is now on temporary hold. Only after the basic fiscal matters are resolved and special funding for the eradication plan is secured, will the service reactivate it. So for now, Marin Audubon will discontinue our regular presentations on the plan's scientific and conservation value, but we will continue to support this necessary step to restore the Farillons to health and resilience. Thank you for all your past support.
Thank you. Next is Gail Johnson, followed by Rachel Wilson, and then Margaret Malloy. Gail Johnson.
Morning. Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff. I'm Gail Johnson from the little town of Morro Bay. Next slide, please. Morro Bay welcomes visitors from all over the world, the young and the not-so-young. Next slide, please. We welcome people of all abilities with appreciation for our nonprofit friends, Jack's Helping Hand and Operation Surf. Next slide, please. Morro Bay hosts a popular bird festival every January, and hundreds of thousands of visitors come each year to see our sea otter nursery and our awesome rock. Next slide, please. We have ceremonies, weddings, baptisms, and tribal rituals. Recently, hundreds gathered to symbolically restore our rock, a Tumash spiritual site, and we were blessed by Tibetan monks. Next slide, please. And we have our silliness, witches appear in October, and we have Pirate Steve. Next slide, please. We are a place for families and gatherings and solitude. Next slide. Our beaches offer endless opportunities for playing, people watching, exploring, and, next slide, please, learning. Weekly, buses from the Central Valley bring youngsters to explore our natural wonders, teaching ships visit and offer tours. Next slide. Our town invites everyone for recreation, relaxation, and contemplation. Next slide. Morro Bay is a place for riding, surfing, fishing, and the freedom to be your own unique self. Morro Bay is a place for everyone, and we look forward to welcoming you in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rachel Wilson, Margaret Malloy, and then Sherry Hafer and Tom Hafer. Rachel Wilson.
Slides, please.
I'm excited. My name is Rachel Wilson, and I am excited about your upcoming visit to Morro Bay. You will join about 800,000 visitors per year. Many of these people are escaping the hot San Joaquin Valley and are farm workers. We are still a very affordable place to visit, and they can visit during a day trip. Next slide, please. I'm just going to quickly show you all of the different things that are happening in our community. Next slide, please. Morro Bay Bird Festival, next slide. Open Surfing Championship, next slide. Again, our handicap camp, next slide. Our Ironman Triathlon, next slide. Music near the bay at Tidlands Park, next slide. Our Avocado Margarita Festival, very well attended, next slide. Playing on the bay, we have a youth sailing program that brings in literally hundreds of youth. Next slide. And families on the bay are kayaking, often with their pets. Next slide. And paddle boarding with pets. Next slide. But our way of life, several major changes are being proposed for our port that will result in major changes for Morro Bay. Next slide. You will learn about these during your visit. Next slide. Finally, though, I want to welcome you to Astero Bay and the communities of Morro Bay, Los Osos, Cayucus, Harmony, and Cambria, because we are all the Astero Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Margaret Malloy, Sherry Hafer, Tom Hafer, and then Walter Lamb. Margaret Malloy.
I have a slideshow, could you please, yeah, there it is. Great, thank you. Do I get to control this?
When you need the next slide, say, "Next slide," and we'll answer for you.
So thank you. Okay, this is about coastal exemption permits. They have no notice hearings, findings, conditions, or appeal opportunity. So it is imperative that the commission does not approve multiple serial CEXs, which has happened in Venice, and it's a real issue. Next slide, please. On April 9th, Danny Ziff confirmed that exemption determinations made by the executive director are not noticed to the public. Next slide, please. On April 10th, Mr. Hudson appeared to say that there was a public process. No, there isn't. I'm sorry. Unless you track every single property constantly, there's absolutely no way to know this. Next slide, please. This is Coral Lambert, serial violator of de facto hotels from RSO buildings in Venice. On the bottom right is the 1217 Oceanfront Walk. Since 1985, that has been ground floor retail. Next slide, please. He bought the property in 2015. Next slide, please. The commission has approved six successive CEXs for this property. Next slide, please. Keep going, please. Next slide, next slide, next slide, next slide. An existing, no, go back, sorry, go back. An existing restaurant does not, right there. There is no existing restaurant. It hasn't been there since 1985. It's a change of use. Next slide, please. Keep going, keep going. He did a renovation for, asking for $60,000 worth of renovation in nine out of 36 units. Keep going, please. Keep going, please. Successive, keep going, just keep going. Successive applications for a $10 million renovation of a hotel. He claims that there are 11 apartment units in.
Thank you. Sherry Hafer, Tom Hafer, and then Walter Lamb.
Hi, I'm Sherry Hafer. I'm a representative of the Morro Bay Commercial Fish Organization and a Director of React Alliance. The fishermen for over the last eight years have been meeting with coastal staff and other state agencies, and we have discussed our concerns with the high-resolution geographic surveys, HRG surveys, damaging or killing fish, larvae, sea plankton, eggs, and krill, impacting our fisheries sometimes for years. We asked for a biological assessment before-after-control impact study set up before the surveys began, similar to what the Coastal Commission required PG&E for their seismic survey work in 2013. We discussed issues with the state lands commission's ability to enforce the HRG survey permit requirements and gave examples of what happened to the Humboldt Dungeons Crab fishermen in 2020 and the RAND acoustic report that demonstrated the East Coast survey vessels were emitting much higher decibels than were regulated. We asked for an independent acoustic monitoring study to ensure that they were within their legal safe limit. We discussed our history with fiber optic cables and the HRG survey impacts and designed a mitigation plan similar to what we had had with the fiber optic industry the last 20 years. It was titled the Morro Bay Lee's Area Mutual Benefit Corporation. This industry-to-industry agreement began with site surveys and was approved in the SB 286 legislation. All of our requests have been ignored with the CCC staff by giving the green light to Equinor on April 17th, with none of our asks for monitoring and mitigation in place. The approval by the Coastal Commission staff was done secretly with minimal public participation. We found out two days after the fact, despite multiple requests, to learn what was going on. This is the picture on the screen of the HRG survey work by Equinor since they began on April 19th off the coast of Cambria. Fishermen have already documented declines in their catches by 67%.
Tom Hafer, Walter Lamb, and then Patty Opats. Tom Hafer.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Tommy, I'm the president of the Morro Bay Commercial Fisherman's Organization. And yes, like Sherry was saying, we've already experienced a drop in our, in our rock fishing, black cod and rockfish, 67 to sometimes 70% since April 19th, when they started. We told you guys that was going to happen. We've experienced this before with the fiber optic cables. They, they took care of that problem. So I'm just wondering, so are we just supposed to keep, keep losing our catches because this guy's out there pounding 24 hours a day? It's getting a little ridiculous. We need something to, you know, something done about this. We can't just let these foreign companies come in here and wreck our fishing, because that's what's happening. And that's just the Ecuador's call area. Just think what's going to happen after this. So I think we just better slow down, let the working group work out something, and get it done. Because this isn't right for these guys to come in here and screw our fishing up. No monitoring, no mitigation, just like we told Kate Hucklebridge, this was going to happen. It's happening. So that's all. Do something about it, please. Don't issue any more permits till something is done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Walter Lamb, followed by Patty Opats, and then Betty Windholtz. Walter Lamb.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Walter Lamb, representing the Bino Wetlands Land Trust. Wanted to note that, again, I mean, I come to your meetings and I hear a lot of the same issues being talked about by people over and over, and it's, I'm sure it must be difficult to digest all of that information, but I think at the same time, hopefully, you recognize that these are all very important issues, and the Bino Wetlands being one of them. And I want to say that I appreciated very much at your last meeting, you're taking a little bit of additional time and effort to try to work through a problem. We really appreciated that. I will note that the acreage, even the higher acreage that we talked about for native restoration, amounts to .0006 of the Ecologic Reserve, so we do have a lot more work to go. Just this week, we received a draft environmental impact report for a Lincoln Boulevard Road widening project that would permanently impact 1.7 acres of the reserve and an additional 4.6 acres temporarily. So these are the kinds of things we face, and it does seem that statewide, there's a pretty overt bias against the Bino Wetlands Restoration, or sorry, Bino Wetlands Ecologic Reserve because of its proximity to urban environments. And we think the opposite should be true. We just did a field trip last Friday for a group in Limerick Park, and these are kids that don't have a lot of access to nature, and they were thrilled to be in the Ecologic Reserve. It's an amazing place. It's different than places in Northern California or even San Diego County, but it's very important. And what we would like at this point is for you to get an update from the Department of Fish and Wildlife as to the status of their big long-term plan, which is sucking all the time and energy and money away from efforts that we could have right now to address issues such as invasive species, crash, equitable access. So really get an update from CFW, and we would love for you to have a Los Angeles County meeting and a site visit. I think that would be very informative for you. Thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of your time.
Thank you. Next, Patty Opats, Betty Windholtz, and then Samuel Casillas, Patricia, or Patty Opats.
Hi, I'm Patty Opats from Fort Bragg, California.
Hi, I'm Patty Opats from, um, Fort Bragg, California. And I want to thank you for your continued efforts in working with Mendocino County in expediting dead tree removal and installing rooftop. Excuse me, rooftop solar panels in the coastal zone. What seems like a small issue isn't if you live under a big tree. We are also grateful for your consistent in your vigilance and participation in the litigation with Mendocino Railway. Your March eleventh letter raising concerns and objections to the Federal Railway Administration's negative declaration number zero zero eight dash two four. Um, your Dr. Vanessa Metz, the commission's water quality specialist, cited serious concerns regarding toxic compounds leaching into the Noyo River. One of our, the city of Fort Bragg's primary water sources. This was a closed item, um, on the Wednesday, on your, this was a part of your closed session this past Wednesday. And we appreciate your continued support. If they could zoom from where they are, I'm sure Rachel Carson, Ernest Hemingway, and Herman Melville would thank you as well. That's it.
Thank you. Next, Betty Windholtz, Samuel Casillas, and Receiver. Betty Windholtz.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Betty Windholtz. Um, I live in Moro Bay. And I want to begin by thanking Equinor for pulling their de minimis waiver for the sonar testing in our central coast waters. As was mentioned earlier by, um, some of our fishers here in the, on the coast. Uh, SB two eighty-six and the Coastal Commission's seventh condition of the consistent determination really needs to do their work before any more permits are given. And in light of that, we would be interested in the commission examining and perhaps pulling the current uh, permit that Equinor has for outside the three mile limit. Um, it, it was unbelievable to us that this was issued and given permission without a time limit. And the reason is that this is, um, migrating whale season. The whales that were born in Mexico are now traveling with their mothers up to Alaska. And it's right through Equinor's land as well as the two other, um, owners of, or those who have, um, options on the property out in the water. And it's, it's gonna be devastating to them. We're not going to know who has been hurt and who hasn't because, as you know, um, the um, Pacific Ocean is much deeper than the Atlantic Ocean. And so unlike the East Coast where whales are washing up on shore, here they'll just sink. And it's a very tender time, uh, to be having the survey. So our request is that at the least the surveys be halted until the migration is stopped, is, is over. Um, and then while that's stopped, perhaps you need to look at the conditions and see if they're being met. Because like our fishing community who we all support here on the coast, we're not sure that they're abiding by their requirements. So we thank you for your attention and ask for that request.
Thank you. Samuel Casillas, Steve Ray, and Peter Koz. Uh, Samuel Casillas.
Good morning, Coastal Commissioners. The organized misinformation campaign from realtor lobbying groups like Smart Coast against the Coastal Commission has Pacifica on a reckless path due to many willfully negligent individuals and groups having mischaracterized what the Coastal Commission can and cannot do through its capacity to enforce the Coastal Act. Any discussions always devolve into conversation of Coastal Commission overreach. And now the city is proposing the Scott Wiener, the Scott Wiener Coastal Carveouts called Special Resilience Areas that will doom our beaches. But don't worry, the city says, we will improve coastal access by adding bathrooms and sidewalks on top of the walls while the beaches get devastated. The city also stated as one of its twenty twenty-four goals as having to a better working relationship with the Coastal Commission. They then appointed a person who acts as a misinformation surrogate vilifying the Coastal Commission to a, to our planning commission. One of the many of his statements is that the bureaucratic group of unelected officials will not even allow you to replace your roof if they have their way. And advocates to force the Coastal Commission to accept the Pacifica LCLUP as is without the staff recommended changes. But in one example where the Coastal Commission staff has been bullied into submission, they sacrifice our neighborhood of Pedro Point where coastal staff agreed to changes in the land use designation in an area called the undeveloped Pedro Point Field from commercial recreation to residential in violation of SEQA Regulation Section fifteen one two five that requires the current conditions as would dictates LUP updates. Yet the CCC is willing to accept a project-based analysis. This field was in the federal Fish and Wildlife Wetlands inventory as recently as twenty fourteen has multiple hazards, including flooding and shallow water table. Additionally, in the CCC denial of an adjacent CDP at five oh five San Pedro Avenue, the Coastal Commission biologists found red leg frogs and isha. Yet the city county commander, Sue Beckmeyer neglected this. Thank you very much. I have a lot more to say. We'd love to meet with you guys.
And thank you. Next, Steve Ray, followed by Peter Koz, and then, uh, Jacqueline Fuentes, who needs translation from, uh, James Bryan. Steve Ray.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Staff. Uh, I'm Steve Ray, or at least I think I still am since the, uh, last meeting in Long Beach. You, Madam Chair, said you were gonna refer to me as Moro Ray, and now I'm getting called that by everybody. I still think I'm Steve Ray, though, so. Uh, and I'm speaking to you live today from Moro Bay, from which I guess Moro Ray comes from. Uh, very cute, but anyway, uh, and it looks like I'm the sixth speaker talking to you today from Moro Bay. We have a very active community down here, as you can see. And our community is looking forward to your visit next month. Uh, you're gonna be coming here for the June meeting and we're very excited to have you and to host you. Uh, our public officials here have been very involved in, uh, helping to get to make arrangements to have you come down here. Our Visitors Bureau has helped, uh, make arrangements with the hotel to get you accommodations, uh, affordably and everything. Uh, so we have a lot of people that are anxious to come down, anxious for you to come down and visit. Yeah, it's been a long time since you've been here. Matter of fact, I was calculating that the, uh, last time you held a hearing here was the third executive director ago. So it's been quite a while. Uh, we are looking forward to having you and, uh, what we want, would like to do is to take you on a tour to, to, uh, uh, show you the city and also some of the areas where you are going to be talking about in the future as projects come before you. Would also like to host a reception. I am working with, uh, your staff to try to make these arrangements and with the city people here to do that as well. So we look forward to having you down here next month and I will cut myself short here today and, uh, say goodbye for now and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Next, Peter Koz, followed by, uh, Jacqueline Fuentes with, uh, James Bryan, and then Fritzi Martinez. Peter Koz. Whoops.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Yes. Uh, I just want to thank you guys for looking at to the matters with the Newport Beach Harbor, um, and mooring, uh, costs going up, uh, by four hundred, five hundred percent. And we, we are very thankful. We, we really appreciate it. And I would like that, uh, the Coastal Commission uh, questioned them and asked them, uh, why they're using only one appraisal or, or why, and look at to their spending, why if the root cause is actually their spending, it's the, the, the harbor department used to be run by, by sheriff, not by the, by the harbor department. And it was much cheaper that time to run it and, and not, we have to carry that, that cost and, and the services that the cost is, is so high. It's not actually a service, you know. So we are really appreciative. We're very thankful. I sent you guys a, uh, email and I, I also used to work with the, with the uh, No Child Left Behind and I, I feel we are, we are a child left behind right now and, and we are glad that you guys are looking into it. And please ask them question, uh, why using one appraisal which is heavily tied to them? And, and there is a conflict of interest and, and what's the reason why, why the cost? But the root cause is the, actually the cost of, uh, uh, policing the harbor or, or maintaining the, managing the harbor. And ask all those questions and, and we are very thankful. Thank you so much for looking into it. And, uh, we put a petition and everything and, and, uh, yeah, that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jacqueline Fuentes.
I can, um, translate for Jacqueline.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Jacqueline Fuentes. I've been a housekeeper for two years and a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. I moved to this country to seek a better life for my family. Unfortunately, to do so means sacrificing four to six hours commuting from Little Rock in the high desert to Orange County and back. This is the only way I can afford proper housing for my family since rents are so unaffordable in Southern California. Workers like myself should be able to live near their jobs and benefit from the resources of the coastal zone. The Magnolia Tank Farm Project would give us an extremely rare opportunity to do this by offering affordable housing near the beach. Please approve this project when it's before you again.
Thank you. Next is Fritzi Martinez, and then we have four speakers after that. Fritzi Martinez.
Uh, excuse me. Could you repeat that?
Uh, we, uh, we have five more speakers, including the speaker.
Okay, let's continue then.
Okay, Fritzi Martinez. Second, you should be able to unmute now. Uh, Fritzi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, now we can hear you. Yes.
Alrighty. Sorry about that. Uh, good morning, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. My name is Fritzi Martinez. I'm a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. I live in Montebello, but I work in Anaheim, which means that my commute is three hours by bus every morning. In fact, I'm on that bus right now. If I have the time back, I've spent it fully focused on studying for my communications degree from East Los Angeles Community College. Sadly, the length of my commute is not unique for the average worker in Southern Cali- California. The Coastal Commission has the opportunity to make a difference in this crisis with the Magnolia Tank Farm Project. Please approve it when it's before you this July. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Susan Kirks, followed by Leslie Purcell, and then Tomas Castro. Susan Kirks.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Heart, Commissioners, Staff, and Community. I'm Susan Kirks, President of Madrona de Bon in Sonoma County. I'm speaking today on the proposed distribution of a second generation anticoagulant poison on the Southeast Faraland Island, just thirty miles off the coast of San Francisco, not a desert island, in an attempt to eradicate mice. I've mentioned in prior comments, new research about indigenous history by Dr. Lulanne Maches Marx and her colleague, providing a broad new context for the place of the Faraland Islands and our local indigenous history. The new book Stars on Earth also discusses the history of mice related to the Faralons. It is important to review this new research and integrate this context into our understanding of and relationship to the Faraland Islands. I've also spoken previously about published research on Brodipicum residues found after poisoned bait was distributed on islands and other projects. One such project is actually referenced in the EIS for the Faralons proposal. The same quote unquote safe EPA labeled Brodipicum product was used for that project. Yet a published report from two thousand fifteen from that island project revealing poison residues and discussing impacts on tested deceased non-target species was not in the Faralons EIS. Bait fourteen to nineteen percent from that project entered the marine environment. On collected deceased non-target species of birds, fish, reptiles, and invertebrates, poison residue was identified in eighty-four percent. Quote, "The extent and concentration in many parts of the food web were greater than expected," end of quote. We again request the Coastal Commission reopen the hearing on the Faralons proposal and deny the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And three more speakers, Leslie Purcell, followed by Tomas Castro and Janet Rogers. Leslie Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Leslie Purcell. I, um, will follow up real briefly on what was just in front, in front of you about the use of the anticoagulants. And there was recently an LA Times article on a lion that was found dead in Santa Monica Mountains and um, it had lots of residue of the rodenticide in its system. So this is an ongoing problem. And I know the Coastal Commission has addressed it from time to time, uh, relating to, uh, development in Bolsachica in the past, um, on the mesa and um, required the developer not to use any anticoagulant because of secondary and tertiary kill. So thank you. I was actually calling for a little clarification on an item W eleven C from, uh, Wednesday's Consent Agenda Arcata PG&E. Um, the, the blurb or description underneath it originally was about Ventura. And I'm in Ventura, so I was concerned. It was a, some other potential change in the LCP for Ventura. And I just wondered what happened to that. It changed now back um, on your website to the proper description. Um, but I wondered about that Ventura item description doesn't appear anywhere else in the agenda. So I was, I'm just concerned about that. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Tomas Castro. Uh, is the group, uh, LO, LOCAC? Is that Tomas?
No, actually, it's Andrea Luker. I'm sorry, you didn't call my name, but I should be on your list.
Uh, yes, uh, just please go ahead since you're here.
Oh, thank you. I apologize for the wrong name. Uh, my name is Andrea Luker. I'm speaking as a board member of React Alliance. React Alliance is a nonpartisan five oh one C three nonprofit grassroots organization that's working to ensure the general public understands what the proposed offshore wind projects entail now and in the future. Two specific points today. First, I want to bring your attention to the East Coast, where since January first of this year, fifty marine mammals have washed ashore, including huge humpback whales, the critically endangered North Atlantic right whales, minke whales, pilot whales, fin whales, as well as many species of dolphin. These mammals' deaths are occurring in areas where they're, where they are also undergoing offshore wind site survey activity using high decibel sound. Even more concerning is there may be up to ten times more mammals that are perishing and don't wash ashore but sink, thus going undetected, not reported. Federal agencies have turned, termed this as an unusual mortality event, yet the offshore wind companies are allowed to continue with their damaging work. Correlation doesn't mean causation, but a moratorium on the surveys and investigation is needed. I can't help but think if this was occurring during oil exploration, there would be a moratorium on the work and investigation. Second point briefly is about process. The agenda for this meeting included a de minimis waiver for Equinor wind to move into nearshore waters to conduct site surveys during prime whale migration season, I might add. Yet the general public, um, yet for the general public, finding this de minimis waiver proved to be extremely difficult. I'm sure that wasn't intentional, but I implore the Commissioners to ask staff to ensure that the title and subject of such waivers is added to the agenda so all the documents can be easily found. The Coastal Commission's mission statement includes the word strong public participation and adding a few more sentences to your agenda would make a marked difference and help with this important public participation. Thank you and have a good rest of your meeting. Again, my apologies about the name on my slide.
All right, thank you. And now the other CAC group that we found, uh, Climate Action Campaign, uh, Tomas Castro.
I, yes, that, that was my, my name before. Sorry about that. Um, good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, uh, we urge you to support the proposed local coastal program amendment or the Magnolia Tank Farm Pro- Project. As a climate organization, we pride ourselves on advocating for policies that will ensure just transition towards a green economy. that will ensure just transition towards a green economy without leaving behind the most full. The Magnolia Tank Farm project is an example of these values put into action. The Magnolia Tank Farm is a model project for coastal OC because it will provide four things working people mostly. Housing, green space, transportation and good jobs. Provides affordable housing and improves coastal access for the public, including a lodge with lower cost accommodations, public parks and trips. These workers will be able to access a previously inaccessible coastal resource, the Magnolia March, while living just several hundred yards from the ocean in a historically, historically exclusive city. In addition to providing opportunity for workers to live near where they work, it also provides a dead, it also dedicates a percentage of its rooms to lower cost overnight accommodations. The project is an opportunity for the county to employ a new model of development, one that prioritizes environmental and labor protections at the heart of its mission. Please approve the Magnolia Tank Farm project when it comes before. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speaker, Janet Rogers.
Commissioners, I'm Janet Rogers and I live in the coastal zone in downtown San Diego, across the street from the port. I asked the Coastal Commission to deny the Port of San Diego's Port Master Plan Update because of the port's total disregard for the environmental impacts on our health and welfare. After years identifying mitigation strategies for significant and unavoidable categories in the Environmental Impact Report, the categories are still environmentally terrible, especially the traffic and noise elements. The traffic impact on downtown will be significant and unavoidable after mitigation. There is no intent to change the plan to achieve a less than significant VMT impact. Since mitigation won't work, the plan needs to be altered. Otherwise, the port is creating more VMT. This is against the port's and city's climate action plans, the goals of the Port Maritime Climate Air Strategy, as well as being incompatible with state goals. The EIR also shows significant negative impacts for noise levels. The noise levels exceed the World Health Organization guidelines. In downtown, there are thousands of residents, including seniors and medically impaired individuals living in the coastal zone within one thousand feet of port lands. Sensitive receptors live and sleep in the affected areas, so a lower decibel level must be set for allowable outside noise. The port has no intention to shrink or eliminate projects that even with mitigation don't correct to lessen significant impacts. Instead, the port purposely decided to ignore all the negative impacts created by the PMPU. There is no evidence of overriding considerations to ignore the huge and negative environmental impacts. Please remedy this situation for the health and welfare of neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much to all of our public speakers, and I'm so glad we were able to get through all of our speakers. I really appreciate your brevity and thoughtfulness and all your comments. We'll now turn to the consent calendar items removed from the regular calendar. And I believe Mr. Hudson, you're going to be presenting that.
Okay, Deputy Director Tufo is actually going to start us off.
Oh, okay. I saw you on there and I just figured we're gonna go. All right, Mr. Tufo, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so that brings us to item five. We don't have any items. Agenda is under item five today, so that's bringing us to item six, which is the items moved to the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, there are five items that staff recommends be moved to the consent calendar. And those are first item eight A, the CDP amendment application by the Morro Bay Oyster Company. I want to note that staff received an email on this item expressing concern about potential impacts to marine life and general opposition to the staff recommendation. This correspondence has been posted to the online agenda along with a brief addendum to the staff report in response to comment, to the comment that describes the special conditions and protective measures developed to minimize risk to marine resources. Staff believes that this adequately addresses the concerns raised by the opposition email. Next is item nine A, the consistency determination by the US Army Corps of Engineers. Want to note that there's a brief addendum also prepared for this item and posted to the online agenda. We're not aware of any concerns or opposition to the staff recommendation of conditional concurrence. Third item is eleven A, the LCP amendment application by the City of San Buenaventura. The fourth item is twelve A, the CDP application by the City of Galita. And finally, item fourteen C, the CDP application by Adelaide 430 LLC. I'd also note that there was an addendum prepared and posted for item twelve A that District Director Steve Hudson would like to explain briefly.
Mr. Hudson.
All right, thank you. I would note that we do have an addendum for twelve A. That's the CDP application by the City of Galita for restoration and planting of approximately two thousand new trees within the sixty acre monarch butterfly habitat. And there are public access water quality improvements. We received two letters in support from members of the public and one letter of interest from a member of the public who was raising concerns about existing abandoned oil infrastructure, including an underground tank in the area and requesting that the facility should be required to be removed as part of this project. As addressed in the addendum, staff noted that the identified infrastructure is actually located outside the project area and is not related to the habitat restoration project and thus would not be impacted by the project activities. And thus, we're continuing to recommend this item be moved to consent and approved today. But I would like to take this opportunity to briefly note that although we're recommending this project be moved to consent, this habitat restoration project is the culmination of a very long coordination effort between your staff and the City of Galita staff over many years. The sixty acre site is part of a much larger eight hundred acre plus open space area along the Elwood Bluffs. And this commission has been instrumental through multiple permit decisions over the years in locking up that open space. And it's a spectacular opportunity for public access and preservation of open space within the Elwood Mesa area. I would note that as a result of climate change and recurring drought conditions, substantial portions of the sixty acre woodland have been subject to substantial die-offs over recent years. And we've been struggling with this. The city has come to this commission with multiple applications in the past for removal of dead and dying trees. And the monarch butterfly population has plummeted in recent years as a result of climate change. And thus, we see the need for some sort of comprehensive management program. And that's what this permit today is. It's the culmination of that coordination effort between our staff and the city staff and the, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank the city for developing the plan and for working with our staff over the years. Just note this new plan will include the planting of more than two thousand new trees using more drought resistant and many native species. It will include many public access improvements, so we're really looking forward to having this one happen. With that, I would like to turn the mic over, back over to Cassidy to close out this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Beyond what I described earlier, staff is not aware of any opposition to the project's move to the consent calendar, and the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendations. Thus, we're recommending that the commission vote and approve this item.
Okay, thanks very much, Cassidy. Do any Commissioners have expertise on anything on the consent calendar? All right, are there any public speakers on any of the consent items?
I guess we just have one speaker for item F11A.
All right.
Leslie Purcell. And Leslie, I've seen you be having trouble promoting you as panelist, so I'm allowing you just because of attendee. Please go ahead. Leslie. Are you able to unmute yourself? It seems that that function looks like it's been disabled now. Okay. Okay, now you're in as panelist. Uh, go ahead, Leslie.
Oh, thank you. Um, I just had something quick about the eleven A for the City of Ventura, the water facility. And I just wanted to note, I am familiar with that area at Harbor and Olivas Park Road. And across the road, there's an agricultural facility and they store a lot of equipment there. It's a dirt parking lot and especially when it rains, there's a lot of dirt that's dragged out into the road and then becomes dust eventually and blows around. And it's really an issue that's been going on for a long time. So if the city can weigh in with those folks and where the Coastal Commission to try and keep that more cleaned up, especially if there's going to be water purification happening across the road, that would be very beneficial. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then everyone else is available for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Return to the commission, ask if anyone would, wants to remove an item from the consent calendar. All right, Commissioner Wilson has a comment.
I just want to thank the staff and the diligence in regards to the, excuse me. Another thing, uh, in, in regards to the aquaculture project that you have here. And I think it's an advancement for Morro Bay, both from the, from the production end and from the environmental end as well. And so, um, again, it's, um, it's the type of production that will both benefit the farmers and probably will probably increase biodiversity in those areas. So I'm happy to see that move forward. Thanks.
Would you like to move consent, Commissioner?
I will move consent.
All right, is there a second? All right, we have motion and a second. A roll call vote, please, on the consent calendar.
Commissioner Akertie.
Yes.
Akertie, yes. Commissioner Bocchko.
Yes.
Bocchko, yes. Commissioner Cummings. Cummings, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, great. Consent calendar is adopted and we will move on to item ten. Deputy Director's report for South Central Coast District.
All right, thank you. Item ten is the Deputy Director's report for our South Central Coast. It includes four permit waivers, one immaterial permit extension and one certification review. In regard to the certification review being reported, it is for an LCP amendment by Santa Barbara County to add new provisions to their LCP relating to childcare facilities. The amendment was approved by the commission at its February meeting this year, and the executive director has determined that the local government's subsequent action, excepting all of the commission's suggested modifications pursuant to a resolution, is legally adequate and that this amendment will therefore become certified upon being reported to the commission. This matter is being reported pursuant to our regulations and doesn't require any additional action or concurrence by the commission. We're not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items for which action is needed today in the Deputy Director's report. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any speakers on the Deputy Director's report?
No speakers.
All right, bring it back to the commission to three or more Commissioners object to an item on the Deputy Director's report. All right, seeing none, the commission concurs and we will move on to item thirteen.
Thank you. So item thirteen is the Deputy Director's report for the South Coast District, which includes three permit waivers, one permit extension and one immaterial permit amendment. In addition, the report today also includes a memorandum responding to four letters of objection received to a one-year permit time extension that was reported last month for the City of Long Beach to reconstruct the Belmont Public Pool Facility. As explained in detail in the memorandum, the primary contention raised by the opponents is that the city intends to reduce the budget for the project, which will necessitate revisions to the previously approved plans for the project. Staff would note that this is the second one-year time extension for this project, and some of the same opponents raised essentially the same issue during the commission's approval of the first time extension last year. I would note that the potential revisions to the scope of a project do not constitute changed circumstances affecting the commission's previous approval, but that such changes would require a separate amendment to the commission's previously approved coastal development permit. Thus, the appropriate forum for members of the public to raise their concerns regarding changes to a project would be during the amendment process, not the extension process. And that amendment process would include a separate public hearing before the commission to evaluate and approve any proposed changes. The opponents also raised several other objections to the project itself. However, these objections are in regard to the underlying project itself, are essentially the same arguments against the project made by many of the same opponents during the commission's hearing for the underlying CDP and for the previous time extension, and they do not constitute changed circumstances. Pursuant to section thirteen one six nine of the commission's regulations, in order to deny a permit extension request, objections must identify changed circumstances that may affect the consistency of the development with the Coastal Act or certified LCP. It does not provide an opportunity to rehear the merits of the project. For these reasons, the executive director has determined that there are no changed circumstances affecting the previously approved development's consistency with the Coastal Act. And we recommend the immaterial time extension be approved today. Staff is not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items for which action is needed today in the Deputy Director's report. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thanks, Mr. Hudson. Are there any public speakers?
I guess we have three public speakers for this item. Corless Lee, followed by Anna Christensen, and then Ann Cantrell.
Each will have two minutes.
Corless Lee, when you're able to, please unmute yourself. Are you being moved in as a panelist? When you're able to, please unmute yourself and begin. Corless.
Okay, am I, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
All right, my name is Corless Lee. I'm a board member of Citizens About Responsible Planning in Long Beach, California. And this is about the Belmont Pool, which we've put up several objections to this that basically come down to location, location, location. Location problems in this area include a whole host of items, but sea level rise is clearly on its way. It's in a liquefaction zone. And it has heavy erosion weight rates. The costs are exorbitant. I think we're up to eighteen million now just on the architectural drawings. And it is the least accessible location for low-income families. And the Coastal Commission did make a requirement that the city is supposed to provide an equity plan to serve disadvantaged youth. And that has not been produced yet. And I do believe that before you approve this particular item, that you should ask them to fulfill that. Secondly, the Environmental Impact Report is five or six years old now, and we know a lot more about climate change. We've moved the location of the pool. We've taken the, the top off of the pool. There's going to be a big problem with sand getting into it. It really does need a new EIR. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anna Christensen and then Ann Cantrell.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Could you please reverse it and have Ann Cantrell speak first? That's how, I'm sorry to ask, but is that possible? We're, you're showing a slideshow.
Okay, yes. Ann Cantrell.
Thank you.
And then we're bringing your slides up.
Thank you. Good morning, Ann Cantrell, Sierra Club Los Felinos Wetlands Task Force. Next slide. In February two thousand twenty-one, this commission approved a condition CDP for the replacement of the Belmont Olympic Pool torn down in two thousand fourteen because of seismic issues. Next slide. The approved pool was to be built on the sand in the same liquefaction zone as the former pool. It was to be located on what is currently a public park and a public street. Next slide. The pool was to have a plastic bubble roof, movable floor, diving tower and seating for fifteen hundred spectators. It exceeded coastal development height limits and would create a seawall barrier. At one time, this plan was estimated to cost well over one hundred million dollars. Next slide. In October two thousand twenty-three, the Long Beach City In October 2023, the Long Beach City Council approved a new cheaper pool design. The location has been moved so the public park and public street remain. Next slide. Another view shows the roof has been removed, along with the diving tower and all public seating. There are now two outside public pools, a kids' pool and play area with locker and shower rooms in the buildings. Next slide. There are a number of changed circumstances since your approval three years ago. The site plan has totally changed in terms of structure and location. There is no seating for parents or spectators. Open-air pools limit year-round and nighttime use, especially for youth, elders, and disabled. No roof or wall means higher heating costs of blowing sand and trash. Go-chair Anna Christensen will complete the presentation. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, just to complete these points, climate change, sea level rise, and heat island effect are occurring faster than anticipated, making the proposed location less sustainable, equitable, and safe. Seven, the Long Beach Convention Center parking lot, the Elephant Lot, is now available. This is a preferable location for this project and is currently being proposed for the 2028 Olympics. Next slide. And this is that site, the purple and green area. That's a really huge area. While it seems like the city has wanted to always save that location for something else, it is a more equitable and sustainable location. And then I also want to add that I'm speaking for the Long Beach Area Peace Network. And regarding environmental justice, this project was considered to be an environmental justice risk from the very beginning. Staff and the co-commissioners knew that at the time. We understand and we see that our, that the staff and our area director are denying our appeals based on the fact that we can't prove a lot of things, that we don't have, you know, documents to prove that there's a greater heat island effect, or that our population has encouraged, has grown in terms of the need to provide pool resources to low-income communities, although this was listed on the document. I believe we're primarily here to educate the newer commissioners as to the degree to which this project violates the environmental justice policy of the commission. And as you state yourselves, this commission will use its legal authority to ensure equitable access to coastal environments for communities that have been disproportionately overburdened. So coastal development, any coastal development, including this one, should be inclusive for all who work, live, and recreate on the coast, and it can't be. See you next time.
Thanks for your comments, Ms. Cantrell. All right, does that close out comments on the DDR?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, I'll bring it back to the commission. Ask if three or more commissioners object to any item on the Deputy Director's Report. All right, seeing none, the commission concurs, and that brings us, I believe, to Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency. Mr. Tufo.
Thank you. Indeed, that does bring us to item seven, Deputy Director Report for Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency Division. With the withdrawal of the Equinor Seafloor Survey Waiver, we only have one immaterial amendment for your consideration today, as well as one negative determination to report. I'm not aware of any
Could I just interrupt you for one second? I just wanted to note that I did have an ex parte with the Equinor Group prior to the item being removed, and that is on file. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. And on that same topic, we expect a CDP application to be submitted by Equinor, and we'll bring that to the commission at a future hearing. So I'm not aware of any comments or objections received on these items, and no speakers have signed up to my knowledge. We're therefore asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of these items in the Deputy Director Report.
Thanks, Mr. Tufo. Are there any speakers?
Confirming no speakers.
All right, bring back to the commission. Ask if three or more commissioners object to an item on the Deputy Director's Report. Seeing none, the commission concurs, and we will move on to the informational presentation on Vandenberg Space Force Base Operations.
Thank you. I will, yeah, this is the informational briefing on space launch operations at Vandenberg Space Force Base. Staff from Vandenberg will be joining us via Zoom to provide the presentation, and then we have, I believe, four public commentators signed up to speak following that presentation.
All right, thanks, Mr. Tufo. All right, so the way we're going to approach this is, first, we're going to have the informational presentation. My understanding is that they need approximately 17 minutes, I hear. So we'll put 17 minutes on the clock. And then we will hear from two of the primary respondent nonprofit groups, which will also have the same amount of time, and then we will hear from the general public. Thank you.
We're trying to promote an attendee called Space Launch Delta Thirty, but they're on their way in if they can. It said that they're using an older version of Zoom, so I have to manually promote them, I think. Let's give it another try. And I'm unable to allow them to speak as an attendee because it says that they're using an older version of Zoom.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is potentially what we can do is they can update their Zoom. Hopefully, they can update their software. And in the meantime, we will go to the second item, which is the informational, 7B informational update on transboundary pollution crisis in the Tijuana River and Tijuana River Valley. And do you have a presentation on that, Mr. Tufo, or would we go right to Commissioner Aguirre on this?
We do, we
Can I'm sorry to leap around like this?
No worries.
I'll give you a minute.
Yeah, thank you. So, and if I could just, if Space Force is listening in, which I believe they are, encourage them to call in via the phone number provided. That I think is the best way to move forward on that. But shifting to the Tijuana River Pollution Crisis Updates, I am happy to have Dr. Holly Hall with us today, water quality specialist in our water quality unit, and we'll hand it off to her for the update this month.
Thank you.
I don't think your mics were there. Nope. Nope. May use Cassidy's.
Thank you. That sounds better. Okay. Good day, Chair Hart, commissioners, and members of the public. I'm happy to present an update for you today regarding two meetings that I got to attend recently to gather information about the epidemiological impacts of the Tijuana River pollution crisis. Firstly, I participated in a press conference hosted by San Diego State University and the Presbyus Foundation. At this conference, researchers from SDSU presented a white paper titled "Tijuana River Contamination from Urban Runoff and Sewage: A Public Health Crisis at the Border." The paper underscores that the health effects of the Tijuana River pollution extend beyond beach closers that are based on bacteria levels. The report emphasizes the presence of toxic chemicals, diseases, and microbes in the water, air, and soil of the area. Additionally, I attended a San Diego legislative briefing aimed at updating legislative staff on the findings of the white paper, which synthesizes insights from 60 related studies on the ongoing public health crisis. Today, we have with us the lead author of this important report, Dr. Paula Stigler-Grenados, Associate Professor and Division Head for Environmental Health at the SDSU School of Public Health. Dr. Grenados is a distinguished expert with research interests including Chagas Disease, water quality, global health, public health policy, environmental health, and neglected tropical diseases. She has extensive experience in assessing environmental exposure risks, socioeconomic determinants of health, geospatial analysis of environmental hazards, climate change, and community-based participatory research. Currently, Dr. Grenados is involved in several research initiatives, including a CDC-funded project to raise awareness among US healthcare providers and the utilization of tele-mentoring through the ECHO model to educate physicians. She also leads a Department of Defense Global Health Initiative grant focused on Chagas Disease surveillance in military communities along the US-Mexico border. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Grenados today to provide a summary of the white paper.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Thank you for that introduction. I do believe I have a PowerPoint.
I guess we'll bring it up.
Thank you so much. Well, good morning, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to present some data from this white paper. Next slide. I'm not sure why. It looks a little strange on the screen, but I will, I'll just keep going regardless. I just wanted to start off by saying that this paper is titled "The Public Health Crisis", and as we really delve into the heart of this, I'd like to define exactly what that means. And a public health crisis is, could be an emergency, or it could be an ongoing crisis. And it's not just about what has caused it, but also about its impact on people's health and the community. It's not just about those initial trigger of these transboundary flows, but the ripple effect that follows. A crisis affects not only individuals, but also the broader community and its systems. And this is what we address in public health quite often. It emphasizes a situation that's too big, happens too often, and is too unpredictable for normal responses to cope with. So, a public health crisis isn't just about recognizing this interconnectedness of our environment, public health. In our society, it's also about understanding that the true measure of a crisis lies not just in its causes, but in its repercussions. So I just ask, as we discuss this important topic today, to please keep in mind the multifaceted nature of this public health crisis that demands not only swift action, but also comprehensive understanding and a holistic response. Next slide. And as was stated, this report was based off of previously published data, much of which has come from local researchers at our university and other local universities. We focused on chemical, biological pollutants that were in the water, air, and soil. This report itself does not include any health data, and that is something that is next on the horizon of collecting more health data to better understand just how far does this crisis extend. Next slide. I'll summarize the basics of the report and the findings that we found, and I'll do this by looking at chemical and biological, as I said, also water, air, and soil. And so, with chemical contaminations in the water, as you can imagine, with this amount of runoff and sewage coming into the region, we identified 392 chemicals. 224 of those appear on a regulatory list. 175 are on the EPA's Toxic Substance Control Act list, and a substantial number of these contaminants of emerging concern were detected in the water for the first time. This is really important. You can see a list of some of these chemicals, such as pesticides, herbicides, volatile organic compounds, carbons, methanol, xylene, hormones, flame retardants, plasticizers. It was the amount that was also found was a bit alarming as well. Next slide. In terms of the biological contaminants in the water, we conducted, or not me myself, but several of our researchers and the papers that I found conducted a metagenomic analysis. And in that, they found substantial amount of elevated levels of microbes that were carrying antibiotic-resistant genes such as E. coli and Legionella. This is not something that is surprising to find in sewage. It was just the vast amounts that was found, the bacteria like Salmonella, Fibrio, Strab, Tuberculosis, Listeria, to name a few. Parasites and viruses like Trichomonas and hepatitis were also found in large amounts. And this presence of microbial species that are not routinely monitored were also found, and some of these can cause severe gastrointestinal illness. Sometimes some of these diseases are reportable, sometimes they are not, but they often go undetected if people are not accessing healthcare, and the healthcare providers are not testing for these things. Next slide, please. Another interesting item that we found in this report from the research was looking at another report that had come out recently in December of 2023, talking about the increased number of stranded dolphins that had been found in the region that had found to have died from sepsis as a result of an exposure to a bacteria that is normally only found in human waste and sewage. So we do know that the runoff and the sewage contamination is affecting our animal species that are living in the ocean as well. Next slide. Next, I want to move to air. We just talked about the water contamination. Air is the next item that's on our radar, really, to look at what is going on with the air. Dr. Kim Prather at UCSD last year put out a report that showed evidence of bacterial and chemical contamination that was becoming aerosolized from the ocean spray and was traveling inland. We do know, as exposure scientists and air pollution experts in our team, that air pollutants can travel inland from water, transfer from water to air, and can travel inland as far as 30 miles at times. This is not new research in terms of how this process occurs, but it is something that we had not been investigating at particularly in this area. So we do have limited data at this time, which is something that we are urgently working on collecting right now. We have researchers out at the beach and also being deployed out into our inland communities to take a look at what does air pollution look like, how is the chemicals potentially depositing that are coming from the water and transferred into the air, and trying to better understand just how far they can and are traveling. Next slide. As far as the soil, we also had several studies that were published, one of which found 170 different organic chemicals and inorganic elements, including things like PAHs, banned pesticides like chloroquine and DDT, PCBs, heavy metals, and phthalates, found in high levels in soil samples taken from a couple of different places on both sides of the border, right at where the transboundary flows are happening. High levels of arsenic, cadmium, and bisphenol A, and tricklesan were also found. We are learning also that as these chemicals are drying in the soils, they can become resuspended into the air and also, again, be deposited into our communities, not just at the coast, but also inland as well. Next slide. So, as again, as exposure scientists, we talk about what is the potential threat. Environmental health, sometimes it's very difficult to monitor because of a lack of systemic support sometimes within our medical care facilities and enough funds to actually monitor for everything. But we do know that with this tremendous volume of sewage and runoff that's being discharged into our environment can have an effect and is having an effect on our marine life, looking at degrading our critical habitats, harming ecosystems, and potentially affecting our food chains as well. Just to reiterate, some of these typical components that you find in sewage and runoff are water, nutrients, organic matter, bacteria, viruses, parasites, other things like indocrine disruptors, plastics, microplastics, industrial chemicals, et cetera. All of these things are coming off into our environment. And again, the flows are not small, they're substantial. I was looking at the IBWC report today on since January of 2024. It looks like we've had 30 billion gallons of flow coming into the Tijuana River. So these are substantial amounts of pollution. Next slide. So what happens to these contaminants? I think it's important to quickly just discuss that bacteria, viruses, and parasites, for example, those pathological contaminants are most likely processed biologically, usually within a matter of days to weeks. But again, some of them can last for up to 30 days or more. They can be found in the water. And now we know that they are also possibly found in the air. The heavy metals, pesticides, toxic chemicals, and plastics can be persistent, some of them indefinitely. They do bioaccumulate in our animals, humans, sediments, and plants. And then in terms of solids and organic matter, these things typically stay local, and they can settle on to our Bentos community, smother plants and animals, and can be transported far away and could cause such things as algal blooms. Next slide. So the significance of this in public health, and there's also some limitations as well, is that that, again, quantity of contamination does increase exposure risk is that that, again, quantity of contamination does increase exposure risk, and we do know that these transboundary flows are very large. The populations at higher risk for complications really must be considered, and this would be older adults, pregnant women, anyone who's immunocompromised, living in the communities. And then we have some serious occupational health concerns. We have lifeguards, other first responders, Border Patrol, all of whom are being exposed on a daily basis, potentially not just from the water contact, but also from airborne contaminants and exposure to soils and dust that's being airborne as well. We have to worry about acute, chronic, and communicable diseases. So, a lot of people are worrying about that acute gastrointestinal illness, but there's also potential for chronic diseases as it relates to consistent and chronic exposure to some of these chemicals and pathogens. And then as well, we worry about people that do come into direct contact, such as in the water, could bring those diseases and pathogens back into the community and spread amongst our community members as well. We also know about the economic impacts on the community. We'd have to think about the tourism, the sick days, that people are not able to go to work. And all of those, how it affects the region, is incredibly important to think about. We do have limited health data at this point, because many of these illnesses are self-limiting, like norovirus. Generally, most people will get over it, not always get diagnosed. They may also have a lack of access to healthcare. They could be seeking care in Tijuana as well. So we are working collectively, and I think you'll hear from Mayor Aguirre about this, on collecting some of this health data to get a better picture. Next slide. Lastly, I want to bring up that this is an environmental justice issue. San Isidro and Imperial Beach have faced increased risk to health. This also includes mental health and their economic livelihoods due to dealing with these serious ongoing contamination issues, making it difficult sometimes for people to go to work when they're sick and also suffering from just living within a community that smells bad and has all of this pollution happening. Local youth have also stated that they feel that their outdoor environments are unsafe due to contamination, and we do know that many of our youth programs have had to be relocated. So this is having a huge effect on not just our immunocompromised populations, et cetera. It's also on our youth that are not able to enjoy their environment. Next slide. So what's next? We've starting to put together some ideas about what kinds of funding is needed. Again, I think you'll hear about this in a moment, to stop the pollution. We need to also understand how deep are these community and environmental health impacts by doing more research. We're collecting baseline data and continuing to do this, monitoring and surveillance for both environmental concerns and human health issues. And then lastly, rebuilding trust in the community and cleaning up the mess is going to be critical as this is such an ongoing disaster that's going on at this time. Next slide. I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you. You can scan the QR code here to get the report, or I'm sure somebody can send you a link to it. And I'd also like to thank our additional authors. All of them are faculty at our San Diego State School of Public Health and have decades of experience working on this topic. So I appreciate their time as well, and working on this topic as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Granados. That was just incredibly, just a great report, but just very disturbing, extremely disturbing, your findings. So thank you so much for all your work. I'll now turn it over to Commissioner Aguirre.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anecdotally, I just want to report that we've had foul odors for the last three to four weeks, where some nights it's unbearable. In eight days, our beaches will reach the grim milestone of having been closed for 900 consecutive days. Access to our coast continues to severely impact our South San Diego communities. As I've reported before this commission, the Imperial Beach Junior Lifeguard Program had to be canceled last year because of beach closures. Due to space being very limited at other non-polluted adjacent beaches, the city reached out to the Navy, and I'm happy to report that thanks to a partnership with them, this year we will be able to host the junior guard program. It will be hosted in one of Coronado's northernmost beaches at a beach inside the Navy base. Additionally, since my last report, Sweetwater Union High School District, South Bay Union School District, Chula Vista Elementary School District, National City School District have all passed resolutions calling for a state of emergency and intervention from our governor and president. This adds to last month's Southern Indian Health Council resolution that was unanimously approved by all seven tribes in San Diego County, calling on our governor and president to declare a state of emergency. Last month, I joined the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce delegation to Washington DC. I joined over 170 regional leaders and elected officials. This delegation, this year's delegation, one of the top priorities for the delegation was the transboundary pollution crisis. While in DC, I met with USCPA leaders to discuss the urgency to prioritize the environmental review of the Tijuana River Diversion Project and much-needed funding for that phase of the Tijuana River Comprehensive Solution. I also invited Administrator Michael Reagan to come tour the Tijuana River Valley so he can witness the sewage floods currently permeating the Tijuana River Valley Campground since January 22nd. Visit the International Wastewater Treatment Plan and hopefully also Imperial Beach. During that trip, I also met with members of the White House staff, including the Chair of Council of Environmental Quality, Brenda Mallory, and members of the Office of Management and Budget to request more financial support in a state of emergency. The White House informed us they've created an inter-agency working group comprised of all the stakeholder agencies that have jurisdiction over the Tijuana River. I also had the opportunity to speak with the California Congressional Caucus to request FY25 additional funding. Earlier this month, a bipartisan congressional letter was sent to the House Appropriations Committee requesting an additional $200 million increase to the construction account of the International Boundary and Water Commission. One of this commission's core environmental justice principles is habitat and public health. Through this public health lens, I also want to report that we met with CDC leaders in DC, which included the Environmental Health and Toxic Substances Liaison, Public Health Infrastructure Lead, and the Deputy Director of the National Center of Environmental Health. We raised our serious public health concerns relating to the increases in upper respiratory ailments that have been prevalent in residents in Imperial Beach and Tijuana River adjacent communities, and the increases in GI illnesses at our local health clinic. The CDC explained that the California Department of Public Health and the County Department of Public Health must make a public health request from the CDC as they are the agency's task with protecting our community's well-being. At this time, the County Department of Public Health only tracks specific types of gastrointestinal diseases and related hospitalizations. And as Dr. Granados mentioned, not everybody is hospitalized or can afford health coverage to be hospitalized. In response to this, the city of Imperial Beach has created a task force comprised of leading public and environmental health researchers from San Diego State University School of Public Health, including Dr. Granados. Researchers from Scripps Institution of Oceanography, including distinguished professor Dr. Kim Prather, who's a leading researcher in aerosol studies, and medical physicians who are seeing a significant increase in ailments that may be traced to sewage and other pollutants to help better understand the airborne pathways of these pollutants and much-needed interventions. We are also working with the San Diego County Board of Supervisors Vice Chair Lawson Reamer to ensure the County Department of Public Health participates in these studies and champions our efforts to provide healthy conditions for all individuals in the region. I look forward to next month's presentation, which will focus on a study that has, as Dr. Granados mentioned, found stranded bottlenose dolphins in San Diego beaches that may be an indication of changes in their environment and exposures to contaminated water, which may be the culprits of their deaths. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Aguirre. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Wilson?
Excuse me, I have to interrupt today. You know, I just have, this is an extremely serious health hazard. But I want to also, and an environmental justice issue, but it's not that environmental justice issue isn't confined to our border, you know, in it actually is generated to an environment, from an environmental justice issue throughout the watershed. It's, it's not, these are not wealthy and/or resourced communities that are just dumping raw sewage and garbage into the Tijuana River watershed. And I've actually, some years ago, did some work in Tecate to try and alleviate some of those issues. And these are communities that they in themselves are under-resourced and highly impacted by pollution issues, which then are just collected and magnified at the end. And so, what we're dealing with is the tailpipe of an engine that is just dysfunctional and producing pollution, and we're trying to mitigate for that pollution. And like so many solutions, you really, we're going to need to, and this isn't to cast blame. It's, I think, I just think we need to also broaden our partnership. And I know you guys have been talking about that, and are in sort of a systemic solution, because we'll always be dealing, it's just so much harder to filter the pollution at the end than it is to not generate it in the beginning, and much more expensive. So, I'm just, I'm just so grateful that Commissioner and Mayor Aguirre has brought this to the fore because it's not, it's regional and local. And so, this is a tough one, and it's going to require a lot of resources. And I'm really grateful that, again, that Commissioner Aguirre has really pushed very hard and gathered her community in such a way to deal with this. I, it's both daunting, and I have to say, I have some hope because of the work that you're doing. So, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner Wilson. Before we have any more comments, I just learned that there are two public speakers, apparently, on this item, which I wasn't aware of. So, could, we'll just open a public comment, then I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments on this item. So, Chris, do you have your public commenters ready?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have two minutes each.
Leslie Purcell, and then Philip Musagis.
Good morning again, Commissioner. I wanted to bring up a related item. This is a shocking report. I mean, it's really very daunting, but fortunately, hopefully, we're working on it, it sounds. And, you know, we support any kind of funding for facilities to help treat this. But the additional rocket launches, this is related to the Vandenberg that were permitted last year.
Can you come back when we get to the Vandenberg issue? Well, Ms. Purcell, I can only have a public comment right now on this issue. So, if you want to take your remaining time on this issue, that's great. Otherwise, we'll hear from you again on the Vandenberg issue. Not sure where you went. Okay, let's move to our second public speaker, and we'll catch up with Ms. Purcell when we do our next item.
Okay, Philip.
Good morning. This is Philip Musagis. I'm the Executive Director of San Diego Coastkeeper. Can you all hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, thank you. So just, I just have a couple of brief updates and comments. Just to begin with, Coastkeeper strongly supports all the concerns that Mayor Aguirre and that Dr. Granados have raised, and the need for further public health study, further study of the ecological impacts from this chronic pollution into the estuary and offshore on marine mammal species. All of that is, I think there are growing concerns that are coming out of this increased attention on these issues. Just from Coastkeeper's perspective and the work we're doing, I wanted to make sure that the commission is aware that we filed a lawsuit in federal court on April 11th against the International Boundary and Water Commission, specifically related to violations of their Clean Water Act discharge permit for the South Bay International Wastewater Treatment Plant. We found in our investigation over 600 violations of the permits, effluent limitations, receiving water limitations, and other permit violations in the last five years. And this includes sewage-related effluence, and also includes a number of hazardous chemicals, many of which have been banned or discontinued use in the United States, including DDT, PCBs, various pesticides, some of which Dr. Granados had mentioned. And our goal with that lawsuit is to have federal court oversight and a court order putting additional pressure and additional accountability on IBWC to make sure that they get the plant back into compliance as quickly as possible. And then I just, in the time remaining, if you allow me, I just wanted to raise another issue. Mayor Aguirre referred to it, but there is another issue that's arisen since the January 22nd severe storms that we had in the South County. Yeah, if I could request just another 20 seconds, if not, I understand. Okay, that'll be really brief. After the January 22nd storms, there was a very high flow of untreated sewage from the Smuggler's Gulch Canyon and through the Canyon Collector, which has been inoperable and which is part of the IBWC's permit. That flow has continued. It's over 2 million gallons a day, and that caused a breach in a diversion channel that is managed by the city of San Diego. There has been no firm action, no attempt to repair the breach, and the result of this is millions of gallons of raw sewage flowing, instead of being diverted to the river channel, they're flowing out into a flat area of the Tijuana River Valley and causing ponding and huge amounts of untreated sewage to just kind of permeate other areas of the Tijuana Valley that were not previously impacted. This includes private property, and this is really, this is causing additional odor issues and public nuisance and potential public health impacts that need to be addressed. So my request to the commission is very simple. The community needs your help. It would be great if the commission could reach out with a letter or other communication to the county and the city of San Diego and ask them to resolve this issue as quickly as possible, because there is a simple fix that can be done to repair this breach in this channel and get the sewage out of this area of the valley that is causing additional impacts. Thank you. I appreciate the additional time. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there additional speakers?
No more speakers.
All right. In that case, I'm going to bring it back to the commission, and I believe, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim. And just want to thank Dr. Granados for the presentation and for Commissioner Aguirre's persistence on this issue that is worsening over time. And it's sad to see that it's, you know, slow to get funds to resolve this, but it's, yeah, at crisis proportions, obviously. And so, I'm just grateful that we're able to continue to get informed and updated on this so that we can, you know, keep this at the top of our mind and at the top of our priority list. I guess I wanted, I had two asks, and that was, I was wondering if we could get, if we could, if the, if Dr. Granados, if you were, if you could send the white paper over to us, and it sounded like there's some other papers you referenced, and maybe we could send that to staff, and we could, and the staff could send that out to all the commissioners, because it'd be just helpful to have these for reference. And then I'm just going to make a little bit of a statement that, you know, during a time when we are sending billions of dollars overseas to other countries to fight wars, it makes absolutely no sense that our governors, our government is not trying to work with one of our bordering countries to fund this desperately needed public health crisis. And so I think, to the extent that we can continue to put pressure on and really highlight how this is impacting children, families, potentially, you know, future generations in our environment, that, you know, this is something that we should be working with our partners in Mexico to address and put as an emergency and a priority on our funding list. And so, I think drawing those parallels is really important for us to keep at people's minds that, you know, if we can fund wars overseas, we should be funding our crises here at home and protecting people in our country and our neighbor's country.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Cummings. All right, not seeing any other commissioners that like to speak, I'd just like to associate myself with the comments, both Commissioner Aguirre and Commissioner Cummings. I just couldn't agree with you more. I know, you know, we're having another round of federal budget discussions at another round of federal budget uh discussions at uh in Congress. I, it it's just unbelievable to me that this is continuing and now with this additional damage that was just reported. Um, I'm wondering, Cassidy, about, is there an opportunity for us to send a letter to the city and county indicating of the impacts that this breach is having on coastal resources?
Yeah, I'm happy to look into that and prepare a letter. And then we can, excuse me, explore if that would um be best directed from staff or from the commissioner or from you, Chair. Um, but that's something we'll, we can definitely follow up on.
Okay, I look forward to that. And again, I know I speak on behalf of everyone, thanking you, Commissioner Gary, for your absolutely selfless and nonstop efforts in this regard. And it's just such a tragedy. And having seen it and toured with you and with the commission, it's just, it's just an unbelievable situation, really. 900 days of beach closures in the most beautiful, one of the most beautiful beaches probably in the world. It's just shocking. So we're with you and anything we can do. I really hope that um there is a health emergency declared. There has to be. How could there not be with the evidence that's been presented here today? So thank you so much for that. Thank you, Cassidy, and everyone who's, thank you very much, everyone that has been working on this issue. We really appreciate it. So on that note, we'll close out this issue, which was an informational briefing and move on, see whether Space Force has been able to uh get online uh their video or what the status is. And that'll be on item 7A. Do we know the?
Uh, yes, they're, they're in now. They're being promoted as panelists, and it's working.
Okay, perfect. Good. I'm glad we were able to fix that, and we'll look forward to hearing from them. You know, actually, if if it's okay, I want to just take a brief break, just have a little bio break here for the commission and staff. We'll come back in 10 minutes with the Space Force, we'll come back at 11 with the item 7A. Um, no, that's not going anywhere. All right, everybody, this fell off again. I don't know what's up with that, but it doesn't matter. Okay, we're going to um resume the commission meeting. I see that the folk, the Space Force, Space Force folks are here. So uh, please, why don't you begin your presentation?
All right, can you hear me okay?
A little louder would be great.
All right.
Uh, we're getting a little bit of feedback, and it's uh, you're still pretty faint sounding.
Should be good now. Can you hear me okay now?
That's, that's better.
That's good, but just as louder, as close to the mic as you could, would be great. Thank you.
We got projected a little bit.
All right. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Colonel Brian Titus, Vice Commander of Space Launch Delta 30, and I'm joining you here from Vandenberg Space Force Base on the central coast of California. Um, I'm here with members from our environmental team. Tiffany Witsett Odell is here with me, as well as Samantha Kaiser Sat. So Tiffany's gonna be briefing with me, and then uh they're both here to answer any questions that come up, come up along the way. Uh, so since our last discussion, and in response to your concerns, we've developed a presentation that provides a broad picture of launch operations at Vandenberg and discusses a phased approach to our consultations with the commission. Uh, we'll also provide an update on several topics from last month. And and, you know, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to help inform the decision on our 36 launch federal consistency application. Uh, if you go to the next slide, I'll, I'll provide an overview. Um, next slide is an overview. So um, during the briefing, I'll discuss our mission at Vandenberg, just to kind of kick us off. What's the why behind what we do? Explain why we're seeing an increased launch tempo at Vandenberg. Describe the federal role in launch activities. Show you what our launch tempo and the associated consultations will look like over the next few years. And then we'll explain some of our environmental monitoring program aspects, provide an update on marine debris and sonic booms. And then we'll close with a summary of our current initiatives in the coastal region. Uh, we'll start with the next, we'll start with the mission on the next slide. So um, our mission at Vandenberg, uh, well, first of all, Vandenberg is a, is a United States Space Force military installation. Uh, there's a map of it there. We're talking about 100,000 acres and about 46 miles of coastline. This, we're part of the Space Force. The Space Force's mission is to, is to secure our nation's interest in, from, and to space. Vandenberg plays a key role in ensuring that the Space Force can place critical capabilities on orbit. Vandenberg is the largest spaceport in the country, and we're the second busiest. Cape Canaveral, which is in Florida, is the other major spaceport where the DOD conducts launch operations. Because of Vandenberg's geographic location, it's ideal for launching satellites into low Earth orbit and polar orbit. So these orbits are several hundred miles above the Earth and are typically used for weather, communications, and also Earth observation missions. The map on the right helps orient you as you hear me say Space Launch, or as you hear me say SLIC, uh, that's short for Space Launch Complex. And that gives you an idea of where the Space Launch Complexes are on our, on our installation. If you go to the next slide, we'll start talking about why we're seeing an increase in the launch cadence. So it's a question that we hear a lot. Why is the launch cadence increasing at Vandenberg? So I guess I'll just kick it off with, the United States is currently in a great power competition. So a great power competition is when rival nations with global interests are vying to be the preeminent actor in international politics. It unfolds in every domain, um, land, air, cyber, and also space. So to support the national security strategy, the Department of the Air Force is re-optimizing for great power competition. As a US Space Force unit under the Department of the Air Force, we're focused on supporting Air Force, DOD, and national objectives. And we're moving out with a sense of urgency. The national defense strategy highlights the need to increase collaboration with the commercial space industry and to leverage its technological advancement and entrepreneurial spirit. We will incorporate commercial systems during peacetime, like we're in right now, and competition to provide capabilities that support our day-to-day operations. And then we'll be able to shift capacity during times of crisis and conflict. Expansion of commercial space has created new oppor, new opportunities and enables increased launch. Satellites are less expensive than ever. The government and industry are moving from small constellations of large, exquisite, expensive satellites to proliferated constellations of small and inexpensive satellites. There are multiple launch service providers competing for government and commercial missions, and some of those companies are finding ways to reuse their boosters, which is also driving down costs. So the cost and the barrier to entry has dropped significantly over the last 10 years. All of these factors combined have led to a significant increase in the number and type of launches we're seeing uh from our nation's spaceports. There's, at the same time, an increase in the supply and the demand. On the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the federal activity aspect of this. So the Department of Defense has a statutory responsibility to support commercial space launch, and that's directed by Congress. For 40 years, we've encouraged and supported commercial space launch entities, which is directed in the Commercial Space Launch Act of 1984, and it's codified in Title 51 of US Code. Title 10 of US Code authorizes DOD to maximize the use of DOD launch infrastructure by the US private sector to maximize effectiveness and efficiency, efficiency and encourage commercial space activities by enabling investment, commercial investment in DOD space transportation infrastructure, also called launch infrastructure. To implement our statutory responsibility and to protect public safety, the DOD performs several key functions. First, we provide use of Air Force real property at Vandenberg to launch service providers. Doing that promotes private investment in our launch infrastructure. Second, we control the launch schedule, and we decide when the users will launch from our spaceport. Third, on the day of launch, we conduct the weather, the weather and the debris analysis, which ensures that if there is a potential, if there is a launch mishap, which is, which is rare, but it could happen, that that doesn't threaten public safety. And we conduct environmental monitoring and compliance, whether it's for DOD or commercial launch operations. Commercial launches at Vandenberg are performed in the exercise of DOD statutory responsibilities to support commercial space launch. On the next slide, we'll talk about what the launch forecast looks like in the next several years. So um, starting at the top of this table, um, we support about five DOD test launches per year. So this includes uh ICBM tests from Air Force Global Strike Command and Missile Defense Agency test launches. At SLIC 2, we expect to see Firefly grow to between eight and 12 launches by 2026, while ULA will likely remain steady at about four to six launches from SLIC 3. Phantom, which was recently approved for a 48 launch CD uh back in December, is working towards its first launches in 2026, and will start at three per year initially. SpaceX will continue to increase its launch rate at SLIC 4 and is expected to start launching from SLIC 6 by 2026. If all these estimates hold true, we should expect to see over 100 launches from Vandenberg in 2026. The next slide shows the consultations that uh that underwrite this, the consultations that that um that enable us to do these launches from a California Coastal Commission standpoint. So this gives you an idea of the current consultations and future consultations that we'll need to complete with the commission. The pertinent data will be collected and shared with all our stakeholders, of course. And with respect to SLIC 4 and SLIC 6, we're exploring what we're calling a phased approach to our consultations as the launch tempo grows over the next few years, and we've been in close coordination with staff on this approach. All right, at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Tiffany, and she's gonna talk about biological monitoring.
Thank you, Colonel Titus. So the next slide, please. Okay, so the Department of the Air Force has been monitoring special status plant and wildlife species for several decades, decades, with launch-specific monitoring occurring since the early 1980s. So we have a good understanding of how individuals react to launches. Generally, animals tend to hunker or flush in response to noise from a launch, but return soon thereafter. While we will continue to do some level of launch-specific monitoring, we are shifting our program to population monitoring based on discussions with our regulators and species experts as our launch cadence increases to capture population shifts or trends that are attributable to launch frequency. Monitoring is conducted under the National Marine Fisheries Service Letter of Authorization, or LOA, for Level B harassment of penipeds or marine mammals. So Level B harassment is non-lethal take. We complete monitoring in accordance with measures in the LOA, which specify when monitoring should occur on the Vandenberg mainland or on the Northern Channel Islands, and this is dependent on noise models for specific launches. On the next slide, we'll discuss the monitoring we do under the US Fish and Wildlife Service Biological Opinions for federally listed threatened and endangered species um under biological opinions. Some examples of measures that are included are video monitoring of western snowy plovers and California lease terns during their nesting season, quarterly night surveys for California red-legged frogs and southern sea otter monitoring. We are conducting new initiatives related to launches to include bat monitoring, acoustic monitoring, and geospatial analysis. Uh, next slide. So our monitoring results today for marine mammals, no permanent impacts to hearing occur during launches. Launches can cause certain species to flush, however, it is temporary, and they return within minutes, and no injury or mortality has occurred due to launches. Elephant seals have increased their use of the Vandenberg coastline despite the increased launch frequency at SLIC 4, a few miles away. In 2017, we documented elephant seal pupping for the first time on Vandenberg. The first year, there were 19 pups, and they have continued to use the site as a refree with a high of 46 pups in 2023. On the next slide, um, for western snowy plovers and California lease terns, launch monitoring, monitoring has indicated that incubating adults may startle and hunker down, it may startle and hunker, hunker down in response to launches. Some will flush off the nest but return within minutes. We are currently conducting a long-term geospatial and acoustic study to determine if the proximity of launch facilities to nesting areas results in change in use by plovers or terns. There is no evidence that launch noise negatively affects California red-legged frog behavior, breeding behavior. Long-term population trends remain steady for the southern sea otter, and there has been no evidence of mortality, injury, or abnormal behavior due to launch. On the next slide, we have established mitigation plans with species experts at the US Fish and Wildlife Service that lay out what measures are required if population declines greater than the baseline annual variation over the past 10 years occurred due to launch. These plans ensure no net loss to species. And on the next slide, we complete annual reports that will be submitted to the commission by one June of each year for the previous calendar year monitoring results. This includes annual reports prepared for the US Fish and Wildlife Service for western snowy plover, California lease tern, and California red-legged frog. Marine mammal monitoring for the National Marine Fisheries Service and bat monitoring results. We will also conduct a five-year annual report summary and meeting with the commission, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and National Marine Fisheries Service. Back to you.
Thanks, Tiffany. All right, on the next slide, we'll, we'll uh jump into some discussion on weather, on marine debris. So first, I think it's worth noting that SpaceX Falcon 9 rockets, which is what we're talking about for the CD, um, the rockets and the fairings are reusable and don't create ocean debris. Um, we go out there after the launch is over and and recover the the fairings, and of course, the the rocket lands on either a land or a barge. So at the current, to put that in perspective, at current launch rates, there, that reusability avoids depositing one to two million pounds of debris into broad, broad area ocean. Um, so for, for each, the debris that we we do need to talk about, though, is, is the balloons. So for each SpaceX Falcon 9 launch, we release between seven and 10 weather balloons. These balloons measure atmospheric condit, conditions to ensure a safe and successful launch. They consist of a two-and-a-half-pound balloon that's 100% biodegradable and a half-pound sensor suite, which is called a radiosonde. The radiosonde is battery-powered, and after collecting the necessary launch weather data from the atmosphere, about 30% of the balloons fall into the ocean and 70% fall on land. We're already pivoting to a much smaller sensor suite that's half the size of our legacy radiosons. SLD 30 and SpaceX are currently pursuing two technology development efforts to further reduce weather balloon usage. First, SpaceX is exploring what's called a vertical wind profiler, profiler, which will provide wind speed and direction um at altitude, reducing and in many cases eliminating the need for weather balloons at all prior to a launch. And then additionally, this summer, we're testing LiDAR technology, which is radar using lasers, um, that measures wind, temperature, and relative humidity to reduce our balloon usage as well. So in the meantime, we'll continue to donate $10 per pound to regional debris cleanup efforts. Next slide. Lot of discussion left the last meeting about sonic booms. So following, we dug into this in the last month. Following the concerns and the public comments, um, at the last public hearing, we formed a small task force of engineers and scientists to better understand the sonic booms reported in Ventura County. For background, these SpaceX Falcon 9 launches have two mission profiles. Either the booster launches from Vandenberg and lands on a barge off the coast of Mexico, or the booster lands back at Vandenberg. We're finding that a subset of trajectories, which is the direction that the the rocket launches in, can cause an audible sonic boom in Ventura County during booster ascent. We're continuing to gather data, uh, to make sure that we fully understand the physics, the impacts, as well as where and when these conditions incur. But in the meantime, we're pursuing push notifications. We're ready to go active on that as early as next week, to ensure that residents are aware when there is the potential for a sonic boom. We'll also have a predictive model that accounts for mission profile, trajectory, and identifies the potential noise pack, noise impacts along the coast. All right, the last slide is uh just a kind of a rundown of all the initiatives we have currently ongoing. Um, so starting at the top, we, we, we have an adaptive beach program that we started back in 2021. This covers nearly seven miles of coastline and results in about three to six beach cleanups per year. Um, Vandenberg also hosts an annual beach cleanup, and for the last seven years, we've improved three and a half miles of difficult-to-access coastline. We usually get about 60 volunteers. We provide some uh base-owned equipment, which is, you know, specialized equipment, and we remove somewhere between 1,000 to 3,000 pounds of trash from the coastline. In the last seven years, we've removed over 12,000 pounds with that program. In the last year, we've also significantly increased coastal access to surf and ocean beaches, which are near Vandenberg during launches. So forever, we took a very conservative approach and closed both beaches during launches. Last year, we asked the team to sharpen the pencil and determine, and we determined that the beaches only need to be closed during what's called return-to-launch-site missions. So those are the SpaceX missions that come back to Vandenberg. From a safety standpoint, we have to close them for those. But both beaches are open for about 75% of all Vandenberg launches. Halama is a, is a, is obviously a keen interest item. We've taken a multi, multi-pronged approach to Halama. So first, we've adjusted our launch operations to minimize Halama closures. In fact, we haven't requested a Halama beach closure in nearly nine months, August of 2023. In cooperation- In cooperation, in cooperation with SLD 30, SpaceX is installing satellite-based internet this summer near the campground and a digital sign on Highway One to inform visitors about the status of the of the beach. SpaceX is also arranging shuttle service from the campground area in in the rare case that we would have to evacuate Halama, which we haven't done in nine months. And they're also coordinating to provide transportation services for Long Pope Unified School District. We're going to bring third graders onto Vandenberg and give them a tour of the launch base. So in closing, we remain committed to partnering with state and federal regulators, ensuring that we can accomplish our national security objectives and perform our statutory responsibilities while protecting the environment and maximizing coastal access. We're grateful for the strategic partnership that we have with the California Coastal Commission, and we look forward to answering your questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that presentation. All right, now we're going to turn to the NGO comments, which will also have the equivalent amount of time. If you could announce the name of your group and those, the two groups will be presenting together. Is that correct?
We have Mandy Sackett and Anna Citron presenting together.
Okay, so then, so that's for surf riders and for the Gaviota Coast Group. And what's, they could state their name and then we'll proceed with their comments and they'll have 17 minutes.
There are also two additional individuals after them.
They will each have two minutes after the conclusion of these comments.
Thank you, and I have a slide deck.
And Mandy, what's the name of the other group that's presenting?
Gaviota Coast Conservancy.
Gaviota Coast Conservancy. Thank you.
Anna Citron. Okay, hello Chair Heart and Commissioners, Mandy Sackett, Senior California Policy Coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation. I don't see my slide deck up yet, but I'll proceed.
Your main slide is up.
Sorry, it's not visible to me, but I'll, sorry, I'll go on. SpaceX is blasting rockets into space from oops, I'm sorry, let me start over. Next slide. SpaceX is blasting rockets into space from Florida, Texas, and California at staggering rates. Just this last week, the Orlando Sentinel reported that Space Coast has already launched its 35th rocket this year alone.
Mandy, can you speak up a little more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I realized I had a fan going really loud. SpaceX is blasting rockets into space from Florida, Texas, and California at staggering rates. Just this week, the Orlando Sentinel reported that Space Coast has already launched its 35th rocket this year alone, which with all but two coming from SpaceX. The Falcon nine rockets carrying Starlink internet satellites take off several times per week. Next slide. Can't tell if I'm on the correct slide, but in Texas, SpaceX is expanding their operations and negotiating a deal to overtake 43 acres of Boca Chica State Beach despite opposition from community members and local tribal nation. Last year, a rocket launch sent dust and debris raining down on South Texas neighborhoods when it spun in circles and exploded after takeoff. Next slide. Surf Rider filed a legal complaint over concerns about SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Program in Texas in May 2023. The launch area is not only home to surf, but also protected wildlife areas, dunes, and sensitive species. Their disastrous test launch last April resulted in a massive debris field, which has not been mitigated yet. And their operations also continually shut down public access to the coast and closes the beach access to Boca Chica for 800 hours a year. That's the only beach access road in the area, which would be like closing the highway for four hours a day every other day. Next slide. In California, as you know, SpaceX is proposing to rapidly increase their rocket launches. Just last Thursday, people from throughout Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, and Ventura Counties took to social media complaining of sonic boom noise complaints from Falcon nine's first-stage landings making headlines. Next slide. Sorry, I can't tell what slide we're on, but I'm going to say next slide again. We strongly urge the commission to exercise its maximum authority over SpaceX, Phantom, and all commercial space companies as they're rapidly increasing launches in California. It's a new industry and regulatory oversight is clearly needed to ensure California's coast, its residents, visitors, and marine life are protected. The staff report from last month clearly indicates that the average launch frequency from Vandenberg was six launches over the past five years. And now, as you just heard today, they're looking to go to up to 120 launches by 2025. They might need additional launch paths, but as you heard, they intend to be increasing very rapidly, so we're really concerned about this. Next slide. Impacts to marine life, which my colleague Anna at Gaviota Coast Conservancy will discuss, as well as marine debris and coastal access are our main concerns. Each rocket is preceded by 36 weather balloons. Next slide, please. And you can see here that these are much larger in scope and size than our normal regular balloon. In a description by NASA, they reported that these balloons can expand to the size of a Greyhound bus and reach 120,000 feet high. And there's also electronic equipment and a nine-bolt battery. So we really agree with Commissioner Kunkel from last month that given this hazardous waste associated with the weather balloons, additional mitigation beyond just the lost fishing gear fund should be applied. Next slide. And then finally, of course, one of Surf Rider's main concerns is also coastal access. Surf beach and ocean beach within Vandenberg and adjacent Halama Beach County Park provide critically important public beach access along the stretch of coast with very limited opportunities. Any disruption in coastal access represents a really major loss to inland communities, anyone wishing to visit this portion of coast, which has already been privatized for far too long. Given the commander's comments last month about the difficulty and inconvenience of retaining staff into the evenings for launches to avoid beach closures, we're really concerned what that might mean as these launches increase in frequency over the coming years. Will they be able and willing to sustain the evening launches? Will the constant disruptions and shuttles, the evacuation shuttles, make Halama a much less desirable place to camp as word gets out about how annoying it is to have to shuttle away for several hours? We do appreciate that effort to find a compromise there. We just want to make sure it's effective and not a major disruption. So just in closing, the decision that you make next month, we'll send a signal to the Space Force and the commercial rocket companies about what impacts Californians are ready and willing to accept to the coast and wildlife and with noise. They'll also set the standard for the rest of the nation. I think it's really prudent to move forward with caution. Despite the proposed coastal access mitigation, environmental monitoring, Surf Rider opposes a rapid increase in commercial launches such as those described today by Vandenberg representatives, and we suggest that the increase proceed at a much slower pace and informed by environmental monitoring. And we also agree with commissioners who indicated that the private portion of these launches really should come forth under a CDP. The primary purpose of 75% of the launches is commercial. And so if that's the primary purpose, SpaceX should really be before you. I'll now turn it over to Anna to continue. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mandy. I have a separate PowerPoint. If possible, to queue that up.
Yes, we're bringing it up right now.
Great, thank you. Okay, good morning Chair Heart and Commissioners. I'm Anna Citron, Legal and Policy Director for the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. We really appreciate the opportunity to hear this informational briefing and to communicate our concerns regarding operations at Vandenberg Space Force Base. Our organizational mission is to permanently protect the rural character and ecological integrity of the Gaviota Coast for present and future generations. The Gaviota Coast spans roughly 76 miles of coastline from Coal Oil Point in Galita to Point Sal near Guadalupe. Vandenberg Space Force Base spans nearly 42 miles or over half of this globally significant stretch of coastline. Our concerns over the substantial increase in launch activity proposed and anticipated in the near future at Vandenberg span a range of impacts from the public access and marine debris impacts that Ms. Sackett just discussed, as well as air and water pollution and impacts on the commercial fishing industry. Today, I'll be using my time to focus in on an area of particular concern to GCC, impacts to biological resources, and specifically noise impacts to sensitive wildlife species from rocket launch activity. Next slide, please. There's an incredible diversity of wildlife found at Vandenberg, including 64 special status wildlife species. This map shows only a small portion of the base, surrounding Space Launch Complex Five, but you get a snapshot of the many sensitive species that are present. Protecting habitats for all these special status wildlife species is important to GCC, but today I'll be focusing on species with federal protections that are covered by biological opinions from the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife, and in the case of marine mammals, letters of authorization from the National Marine Fisheries Service. Generally, launch noise has the potential to adversely impact marine mammals, including in areas of special biological significance, such as breeding and haul-out sites indicated on this map with the magenta circles. When hauled out on the beach, marine mammals react to launch noise with behavioral changes, including returning to the water. The base reports that normal behavior and numbers of hauled-out pinnipeds typically return to normal within 24 hours or less, often within minutes after a launch event. However, with the increasing frequency of launches, we're concerned that these temporary effects will at some point lead to prolonged impacts, including haul-out abandonment. Harbor seals and California sea lions tend to be more sensitive to disturbance than northern elephant seals. So data showing no effects on elephant seals is is not dispositive. Next slide, please. The federally threatened California red-legged frog is present throughout the base. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service found that operational noise may impact frog behavior, including culling frequency, and can lead to increased risk of predation due to a freeze response to excessive sound, to quote their biological opinion for the SpaceX project. The service anticipates the potential for long-term effects from chronic stress caused by routine intermittent acute noise from the proposed project's launch disturbance. These may include long-term population level effects, including reduced reproductive success, survival, fitness, and spatial displacement. And to quote the commission April staff report, the loss of CRLF populations on the base would reduce genetic diversity and gene flow between frog populations, which could affect the overall population of California red-legged frog in the coastal zone outside of the base. So this is a serious issue. Next slide, please. Nesting habitat for the threatened western snowy plover exists all along Vandenberg beaches and would receive sound levels between 100 and 130 decibels associated with the Falcon nine launches, as well as exposure to sonic booms. New monitoring data associated with the SpaceX project evaluated the effects of launch activity during 2023, when a total of 24 Falcon nine missions were launched. According to the commission's April staff report, the monitoring conducted thus far suggests a possible correlation between launching the Falcon nine rockets and reactions from western snowy plovers, including startling and flushing, damage to eggs, and abandonment of nests. Next slide, please. The endangered California lease tern nesting site at Parisima Point would receive noise levels between 80 and 100 decibels, as well as sonic booms. Like with plovers, the monitoring conducted thus far shows suggests that there could possibly be a correlation between launching the Falcon nine rockets and reactions from California lease terns, including startling and flushing. Next slide, please. We absolutely agree that continuing, continued monitoring is crucial. And we really appreciate the efforts underway at the base to collect important data on the noise responses of the species I discussed, as well as protected bat species, otters, and other other species of concern. However, given that initial results indicate that adverse impacts may be increasing, it is important to have the results of this new monitoring before approving additional launch activity. We're also very concerned that at present, there is no mechanism to pause or curtail launch activity in the event that significant impacts to protected species are documented. Pursuant to the Fish and Wildlife Service Biological Opinion for the SpaceX project, an excerpt of which is shown here. If monitoring detects a decline in baseline species populations meeting threshold trigger criteria, the most that would be required is compensatory mitigation. And in the case of red-legged frog, that is creating new breeding habitat within the San Antonio Creek Restoration Area. And in the case of western snowy plover and California lease tern, it is predator control. So we see this approach as inconsistent with protections for environmentally sensitive habitat areas in the coastal zone, which require protection against any significant disruption of habitat values. And so to ensure that the vital habitats present at the base are not significantly disrupted, or worse, irretrievably lost, it's critical that there be a mechanism to pause launch activity in the event that declines in baseline species populations or other significant impacts are documented. The approach taken by the National Marine Fisheries Service is a little different than fish and wildlife and does require the pausing of launch activity if lethal take is documented. And it sounds like there's a process underway to evaluate more population level impacts. And it's our hope that that a similar approach would be undertaken for red-legged frogs, snowy plovers, and California lease tern, such that launch activity would be paused, impacts would be reevaluated, and additional measures to avoid further impacting populations would be put in place before launches resume. I want to thank commission staff and base leadership as well for their efforts thus far to work together to identify meaningful protections for the very valuable resources present at the base. And we hope that additional progress can be made on further protecting wildlife and also in addressing the public access and marine debris issues that Ms. Sackett raised. Finally, I just want to extend our thanks to the commission for being so engaged on this issue and for asking such great questions at the April hearing. I'll be here again next month and look forward, look forward to hearing more about options to effectively condition the SpaceX project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anna. That was great, and thanks to Mandy as well. So now we have two more public speakers. We'd like to bring them in, and they will each have two minutes, as I mentioned earlier.
Okay, we have Leslie Purcell and Susan Malo. Leslie Purcell.
Hello, I'm wanting to comment mostly on the expendable rockets that were permitted from last year for the Phantom. And and these are a concern. I mean, I appreciate that they, that the Vandenberg folks say that they'll only be up to three by 2026, but but the actual number can be 48, and and these rockets will go into the ocean offshore Baja. There would be fuel residues, metals, probably plastics. And this is going to be debris in the ocean waters. And it will increase pollution, which will likely end up washing into California and possibly the Tijuana estuary, the Tijuana waters that we've just heard so much about how terribly polluted they are. And I'm concerned about those contaminants. I also believe that there could be impacts to whales, which are birthing in which are birthing in Baja waters and then traveling up and down the coast. And there was a speaker earlier today that mentioned the whale migration. So I think this is something that needs to be monitored. And I don't know whether it is as part of Vandenberg's increase in rocket launches. But the impacts to these whales is very important as well. I think that the space debris overall is, is a concern. That so many more satellites are being put up. And I don't know if this is actually considered as an effect, but there is a lot of debris in the, in the atmosphere now that we never had before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Susan Mailo.
So, thank you for starting on that slide. I'm Susan Mailo here. And you are currently watching a group of harbor seals flushing in response to a space launch. I am veterinarian-trained in wildlife management and animal behavior, and I have been studying this colony. It's a very small haul-out and rookery in Carpinteria, California. And they have been in this location for over a hundred years. The population has been plummeting over recent years, five, maybe up to ten years, possibly due to an onset of visitors and a changing climate. And after the presentation that I've seen from earlier presentations, pollution is a big part of it as well. I ask that you prohibit any increase in launches that you gave permission to in, in the April meeting. Harbor seals are bestowed with unique adaptations to find food at sea and shelter on land. They find food in the deep ocean by virtue of enhanced sensory adaptation, which allows them to detect hydrodynamic waves of their prey, as well as avoiding the hydrodynamic waves of ocean predators. As a semi-aquatic marine mammal, they must be on shore to sleep and restore their oxygen, which has been highly conserved during dives. A dive requires
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you for the videos. It's really interesting to see. Do we have any more public comment? Thank you. Cassidy, do you have any comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission. All right, great. All right, I have several commissioners that are wishing to speak on this, and we'll begin with Commissioner Kunkel.
Thank you, Chair Hart. First, I just have, I think, a quick fundamental question for staff. Why are we considering, or why was the previously drafted federal consistency determination considering thirty-six launches when the plan is to launch fifty this year? And I think Space Force indicated they were working on a phased approach for you, with you. But I'm just unclear on why we would be considering thirty-six. They would immediately be out of compliance with that.
So, yeah, great question. The it's, it's part of what we're, that thirty-six consistency determination is kind of catching up because of the negative determination issued last year that was then reopened by the Commission because the closures at Halama were exceeded. And so that's essentially caused, I think Space Force had intended for there to be more of a a gap between these authorizations, but now they're kind of piling up because of that reopening. So essentially, that consistency determination is, for thirty-six, is authorizing what SpaceX is doing now. They would not be able to exceed that thirty-six until an additional consistency determination is submitted. The plan at the moment for Space Force is to submit that consistency determination for an increase above thirty-six later this year. It has not come in yet. We're still working on the thirty-six. This phased approach that was mentioned by Colonel Titus is something that we've been discussing with Space Force staff very recently, in the last couple of weeks. To approach this in more segmented pieces, smaller pieces, rather than, their ultimate goal, as I think they've stated and been very clear about, is for SpaceX to be launching a hundred times a year. It's going to just logistically take them several years to achieve that cadence. And so we've been talking about, rather than submitting a consistency determination for a hundred, submit consistency determinations for steps along that path. Fifty, and then potentially seventy-five, and then potentially ninety or a hundred over the next several years.
Okay, I appreciate that. And can you clarify what, what you mean by, you mentioned that they would not be able to exceed the launch quota of thirty-six. But, I mean, they have exceeded the launch quota of six. That's the current. So what, what is the consequence of exceeding that quota?
So part of why they're not going to go past thirty-six is they're still working on the NEPA process for that, for the increase beyond thirty-six. They, it's my understanding, there is a decision point about the type of NEPA document to prepare for that. It still needs to be completed. And the public process for that needs to be completed. Consultations with the other agencies, I believe, are still ongoing for that increase beyond thirty-six as well.
But they can exceed it. I mean, they, they did exceed the six, the quota of six.
They, they do have a NEPA document for launching thirty-six times a year. And so they're, they're operating under the scope of that authorization and that environmental review currently.
If they exceed the thirty-six, if they finish the NEPA process before retaining an additional federal consistency concurrence, what is the consequence? And what was the consequence for exceeding the six?
The I wouldn't say the consequence necessarily for exceeding the six, the, the, the move from six to thirty-six. We reviewed a negative determination for that. There were certain parameters, protective measures that were committed to, as our understanding would be implemented. They weren't. And so that was reopened by the Commission. So now we're kind of working through a different review process for that. If they were to exceed thirty-six without the Commission's concurrence on a consistency determination, the Commission would have before it several options, including request for mediation, a reopening, trying to work directly with federal agency to ensure that that activity is carried out consistent with coastal resource protection. And then there are legal remedies as well.
Okay, and that is and that is different than the process would be if an applicant had violated a coastal development permit.
That's right. It's very different.
Correct. Thank you. I, I just want to clarify that I think I can speak for everyone on this body, that we're not anti-science or anti-research or anti-weather balloons. We certainly want to work collaboratively with DOD and, and the federal administration to achieve our collective mission. We do have a statutory responsibility to protect this beautiful coast. And regardless of if this body decides to move forward with a federal consistency determination or a CDP, I would just encourage substantial increases and additional attention to mitigating the impacts of these exponential increase in launches. I already mentioned this in the last hearing. I won't get into the battery thing again, but hazardous waste isn't comparable to, to derelict fishing gear. And I would recommend that the Commission considers an increased mitigation fee above that ten dollars per pound. I mean, I guess a question for Space Force, if the Colonel is available, would Space Force be amenable to an increased mitigation fee for that marine debris from the weather, weather balloons?
Absolutely. We're amenable to that. We can, we're happy to have that discussion and, and and figure out what the right number is.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. The impacts to low-cost coastal camping, this is an environmental justice issue. It's just one of the few affordable ways that we can, that Californians can access this coast that belongs to all Californians. So you talked about this a little bit last time, Colonel, but can you just describe the experience a camper would have if they were perhaps arriving on the day of a launch, or if they were already there camping? Or even if they hadn't arrived yet, if you could just describe what, what the camper would experience if the campsite is closed? Where are they shuttled to? How far is the shuttle site? How far in advance do they receive a notification? Those kind of things.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be happy to kind of lay out a vignette for that. But we haven't implemented these evacuation shuttles yet. The idea with the evacuation shuttles is that instead of asking campers to, to pack everything up and leave and basically go out to Highway One, which is fourteen miles away, we would have a shuttle that comes in and brings them to a safe area, which is probably not that far away. The launch happens and they're shuttled right back to their campground. And, and by the way, ten months out of the year, nine months out of the year, it's very unlikely that that would happen. But during the summertime, it could happen that we have a mission, it has a specific trajectory for us to put that mission into orbit, we have to evacuate Halama, you know, and we're going to remain compliant with, with what, what's been allocated to us, which is twelve, twelve per year. If you don't mind, I, I think that's a great question. It would be pretty, I, I think we could put that, we could kind of put that vignette together to explain what that looks like. But, but the idea with the evacuation shuttles is to minimize the impact. The other thing that we're doing is we're putting a sign out on Highway One that'll inform campers that there either the beach is going to be closed or the beach is open. So, so we can sort of warn folks ahead of time via that sign, don't make that fourteen-mile drive to the beach because they're closed.
And how far in advance do they receive that notification? Or, or how far in advance would it be planned if it's, if this is planned for the future?
No, it would be, it wouldn't be a surprise. I mean, days before the launch, we would be coordinating with the park and the county to let them, or the Santa Barbara County Park Rangers, to let them know, hey, this, this mission, the trajectory that it's on, we're going to have to use one of our closures to support this mission. It'll be well-known days in advance, and really even maybe weeks in advance, we're giving them a heads up that this is coming. Again, we haven't had to do this since last year, but, but if it were to happen, we would, we would have that in place. We'd have the evacuation shuttles in place. The only thing that would be a surprise is if the shuttle, or excuse me, if the launch doesn't go on time, which happens. I mean, that happens in launch. The weather is not cooperating, the rocket is not cooperating. Sometimes there's, you know, it, it can't all be planned out perfectly. But I would say in general, folks are going to know well in advance that there's a, let's say, a one-hour closure at the beach, and we'll shuttle them out of there. And then once the launch is, is out, we'll bring them back.
Notifies any of the campers with reservations once they receive the letter. So all of the reservation holders are given that advanced notice.
So at least a few days and perhaps even a few weeks? Is that?
Correct. Standard is a few weeks.
Okay. Thank you. I, I still hold that providing the, the benefits of a federal consistency determination to entity, primarily commercial activity is inappropriate, and a coastal development permit would be more appropriate. And I missed this in the staff report last time, that there's actually precedent on Vandenberg where private entities have obtained CDPs, even when conducting activity on federal property. So I understand that DAF's argument is that when the federal government, I mean, the federal government is no longer launching these payloads and requires SpaceX to do that activity. But there's plenty of functions that the federal government contracts out to private entities, and those entities don't receive benefits reserved for the federal government. I just, as the Commission considers this path forward, Controller Cohen would encourage caution and collaboration to ensure that we're comprehensively mitigating for the impacts, and in particular, those inequitable impacts of closing campsites. I mean, that's, those are inequitable impacts to historically excluded communities, and that's of particular interest to the Controller. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bochko?
Thank you. Very, very briefly, thank you, staff, for this. I know that, you know, the last hearing we had on this was, it was kind of confusing for, for me, you know, exactly how this all worked and why this commercial operation was utilizing our federal consistency instead of coming in for a CDP, which I would still encourage, as, as Commissioner Kunkel was saying, to the extent that it is not. I mean, I understand there are these regulations that they have, which I didn't know about before. I also want to thank Space Force for going into more detail for us, so we do understand better. I think it's important, now that we've shown a light on a lot of the potential impacts, that going forward, we can be cautious and pay attention to exactly what's, what's happening. I just have one question. I don't know who can answer this. Maybe you all know it, but is there any limit to the number of satellites that we're going to throw out there in, in outer space? I mean, you know, it's, it's starting to sound, I live in Los Angeles, and it's like, all we deal with is traffic. And I'm just beginning to get this vision in my head, you know, that out there, it's just going to be clogged. So is there some kind of limit? I mean, you guys are scientists too, so I'm sure you're paying attention to what we're doing out there. Is there an answer to that, or?
You know, if I could, Cassidy, just to Space Force, I had that some question, and thank you, Commissioner Bochko. And it was really, my question was, how many are there currently? And again, I agree with you, is there a limit? And I would ask Space Force if they could respond to that. If they don't know, if they could get us an answer about that.
Yeah, I, that's a little out of my lane. So I will, I mean, I have, I have an idea, but I'd rather get you the exact right answer. And we have, we have the expertise, obviously, in our service to give you.
That'd be appreciated, and I think it'd be helpful for staff too. And as I understand it, you guys are going to continue to talk until you bring it back for, yeah. So I, I'm not going to take a lot more time except to, to thank everyone to, again, caution about this commercial use of, of federal monies and other things. And also, I think it's important, what we've learned between the last hearing and now, is that the cumulative impacts is something we haven't been able to study because we haven't had as many launches. So I think a real strong focus on that and how that is studied and measured. And if there is recourse, if we see that going from, let's say, twenty-five to fifty, you start to see real, you know, major increase in impact, which would then, I would hope, inform whether or not they could go to seventy-five or a hundred. Anyway, thank you so much, really.
Thanks, Commissioner Bochko. Now go to Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Cummings.
I echo all the comments from my other commissioners, so I'll just speak to one element of this, which is, I, I guess what I was hearing is sort of a port analogy. So where we have public ports that then service private industry and private shipping, I, I can, I can see why, why the Space Force will be making that type of analogy. That being said, in, in terms of like the public benefit of that is still pretty skewed for me, and it's even more skewed from the perspective of the, the X, I guess the logarithmic or whatever, it's like the exponential increase or of, of not just the, of not just the, the use in such a very short amount of time, but also that one company is, you know, is 10 times all the other companies put together. And I question, I just want to question the, and this is probably broader than maybe this organization can deal with, but it, it, it seems like, I question the national security public benefit of, of concentrating that much power, literally power, communication power into one company that we are enabling in this space, in the, in this case, in a company that has already shown that it, it, it will play in international conflicts directly at the will of a single human being. And it makes me nervous. It makes me even nervous saying these words, quite frankly, that, that we would be, that we feel that it is in the public's best, best interest to allow that and, and, and enable it in, in such a way. I can, yeah, I mean, I'll let people interpret that however they may, but I think the message is pretty clear for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I guess I can follow up on that because I actually had a question related to that because I think to Commissioner Wilson's point and based on what we've received in the presentation, my interpretation was that, you know, the DoD statute or responsibilities to support commercial space launches, that's codified into the US Code under the idea that this would help promote national defense. But then I guess what controls does the US government have once these payloads have entered into space? Because I think one of the things that Commissioner Bocchow brought up last time, that I think Commissioner Wilson's alluding to, is that, you know, when the Ukraine was preparing to launch an attack on Russians, Elon Musk decided to suspend Starlink, which enabled, which prevented them from being able to carry out their attack. And you, and with Ukraine being one of our allies, one would suspect that that would actually violate our kind of strategies around national defense. And so I guess that's actually my question because if the idea is that we're supporting these permits under the idea that we're promoting national defense and then a single company is able to kind of dismantle our allies during conflict, then it doesn't seem like that, that really lines up with why we're supposed to be supporting these efforts. So I'm just wondering maybe if Colonel Titus, you could speak to that, you know, what, what controls does the US government have over these technologies once they're launched into space?
Again, kind of out of my lane, you know, I'm at a, I'm at a, a launch base where I'm focused on making sure that we have as many commercial launch providers as possible to support the strategy that is coming down from the President, the White House and the Department of Defense, Department of the Air Force. So I, I'm not going to try to answer that question. But again, similar to the other, the other question, we can, we can, we can see if we can put you in the right, in touch with the right folks that might be able to, to answer that.
That'd be great. Because I think that's, you know, one of the major concerns that's been brought up here and, and is also kind of linked to this notion that we're, the launches that are occurring there, you know, the majority are to support these private companies and may not actually be within the best interests of national defense. So I think it would just be good for us, I think it would just be good for us to get some clarity on that, you know, because if we're, if the idea is that we're allowing these private companies to use US military bases to launch rockets that then put technologies into space that the US government no longer has control over, that, that I think is a concern for us. And I think it'll be a major concern for the general public as well. So if you can put us in touch with the right people, I think it'd be good for the Commission to potentially write a letter of, of our concerns to the President and state and pro-elected officials within the military as well. I think that would also be something that maybe we should consider. I mean, I guess the last, the, the, the next question outside of that is really around seeing this increase in launches because it seems as if, you know, right now, I guess there's like 36 or we're looking at trying to approve 50 or so launches. But in the, in the presentation, it then went up to, you know, by 2026, about 120 launches plus per year, which that means it's about every three days, that means there'll be a launch, which is pretty significant. And so I guess my question is, you know, what, what's anticipated beyond 2026? I mean, are we going to expect that the number of launches are going to continue to increase to the point where technically we might be looking at, you know, a launch per day? Or is there going to be a limit on the number of launches? Because it just seems like from the public comment we received, a lot of people within the zone are being significantly impacted by these launches along with, you know, the fact that there's visitors within these areas. And if we get to this high-level launches, it's obvious that there's likely going to be impacts on visitors and people and, and wildlife within that area. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to that.
So I don't want to speculate beyond 2026. I'll tell you that it's difficult to even predict out a couple of years. If you, predicting the future is tough, it's really hard in the launch business. But I, so it's hard for me to predict beyond 2026 what the cadence is going to look like. I will say that I have not heard anyone talking about expanding beyond 100 between Slic 4 and Slic 6, which is where SpaceX is going to be launching from. So I'm not, I'm not seeing a huge demand signal to go beyond that. But I would say that, you know, back to the spaceport analogy that we talked about earlier and that was mentioned earlier, you know, the ultimate goal is to, is for this to be more routine and not, not a huge deal. Now, I, I do think that we're committed, kind of like what Tiffany was talking about, to monitoring what's happening to the environment to make sure that we're continuing to be compliant along the way. And if, if the frequency of launches is getting to the point where we're seeing a significant impact, then we, then we have an opportunity to have a discussion about that and, and react. And so I, I can't, again, I'm not going to speculate on what the, what the, what the end state looks like in 2030. I provide you the numbers that, that are, I think, reasonable between what we're hearing from, you know, SpaceX, Firefly, Phantom and ULA. These are all commercial companies that are, that are launching out of here. Over.
Well, thank you, thank you for that response. And I think, again, I'll just say that I do share the concerns that have been raised and, and then obviously raise some additional concerns. But I think one thing in particular that I've heard come out of this board is that when this comes back, I think it'd be really important that a representative from SpaceX is at the meeting. It just seems ridiculous that we can't directly ask them questions. And we've asked multiple times that they come to these meetings so that they can be available for questions. And they've, I mean, obviously refused to because they've never shown up. So I just think it's really important that if we're going to be making these decisions, that they're present. And I hope that, Colonel Titus, we can count on you all to also express our sincere, you know, sentiment that we would like to have them present at these meetings. Because I think it will help, you know, for you not to be in the position of answering questions for these companies. And instead, we can ask them directly and not, you know, cause further delay. So, thank you, Chair. Those are all my questions and comments.
All right. Thank you very much. I have several questions for you, Colonel Titus, but I, I'd just like to start with what I consider to be the threshold issue here that you've heard over and over again, which is the private commercial use of the federal consistency process here before the Coastal Commission. I thought that you, you did a great job as best as you could to, to describe why you felt that SpaceX should not be present at the hearing. But I think when you hear the commissioners and I just referred to what, what we just heard from Commissioner Cummings on, and, and Commissioner Wilson, on, on these issues surrounding SpaceX and concerns about the, the, the Commission's approval and continuing approval of impacts on the coastal environment from a private entity without hearing from the private entity. I will tell you, from my perspective, I think we are going to continue to hit significant obstacles in achieving a federal consistency ruling without having the private commercial entity that is the direct beneficiary of our decision present in the hearing room. I just think that is going to continue to be a problem. And I really hope that they are here the next time. Saying that, I want to turn to also what I consider as a prior, I have a background as a park manager. One of the impacts to the park, the county parks closures and the other activities there, cancellation of camping, for example, limitation on day use, having to evacuate, all of that has an impact on park staff and the operation of county parks. I think one of the things that I'd like to see is a proposed mitigation. They, they're receiving additional phone calls, they're having to change camping reservations, they're going to have additional staff. And I don't think anyone has talked about what the impact is on that county parks department. So I'd like that to be looked into and included in when we discuss the mitigation. So what I'm hearing is that camping reservations are impacted. Is it, is it very, it's difficult, I assume, to get camping reservations at this place? Like, do you know if it's year in advance? Cassidy, what's the story with that?
It's similar to state parks, six months in advance, extremely difficult. They're gone within minutes.
So once people lose the opportunity to camp there, that's pretty much it. So, you know, that is a very significant impact on access to the coast. And I have, I have a lot of concern about that. And I think that's something that should be further addressed in April, when you come, April, I'm sorry, at the next hearing, which I guess is going to be in June? Or the next time we have, okay, so in June. So just all of the issues surrounding the impact. I need to understand better when the evacuations occur. It's just very disturbing. People are out there trying to get away from all the pressures of everyday life and be by the ocean and, and, you know, with all the benefits that provides. Then all of a sudden they're having to be evacuated, get into a bus, even though they may have been notified. It's, you know, kids get upset. I don't even know what time of day this is. All of these impacts concern me a lot. So those are more statements than questions, but I think I'd like to hear more about that at the June hearing. With regard to the launches, so you talk about an annual, let's assume we're at 120, which is where this is, you would, you would like this to go. Are those spread out throughout the year, Colonel Titus, or are they concentrated into a smaller period of time, like multiples per week? How does it go exactly?
Oh, no, those would be spread across the entire year. So it, I mean, in general, if, if we talk, if we're talking 100 launches a year, we're looking at probably eight or nine a month.
Okay. And I'm very interested in the cumulative impacts of these launches along with the other launches. So based on what's been approved or what you're looking to have approved, you have 120 for SpaceX. How many is it total per year with all, all launches consolidated?
Yeah, if, I don't know if we can go back to the slide, but the slide is actually for the whole base. We were only talking 100 for SpaceX and the cumulative for the whole year would be 120.
120 for all of the contractors?
That's right.
Okay. With regard to the US Fish and Wildlife Service, was their analysis based on the 120 launches? Or what was their analysis that you, that we saw earlier in your presentation based on?
So right now, oh.
It was based on 110. And that was from last year.
What did, what did you make of the video that was shown by the member of the public? Is that pretty much what you've experienced in terms of sea land sort of retreat?
Yeah, those were harbor seals, as you can tell from the video. And yes, that's consistent with what we've seen on our base. So what, what wasn't shown was them returning, you know, and how long that took. And usually it's just a few minutes. They, they go out, they get a little wet and then they come back in. But definitely within a 24-hour period, it's, it's back to 100% normal.
And are you still planning on launching in, late at night, as you described at our last meeting?
We've, we've moved away from the, the overnight launches, but now that we're coming into the summer season, which means that there's going to be more campers at Halama, we, we will likely have to go back into later evening launches. It'll just kind of depend on the number of campers that are at Halama at any given time and, and then what the safety analysis shows. I mean, all of this that we've been talking about is really data-driven. So it depends on the winds, it depends on the trajectory, and it depends on the number of campers. But in general, in the summertime, to, to minimize our, our, our risk of evacuating Halama, we'll, we'll do late-night launches.
Because the risk is to people on the beach.
The risk is that we would, there's a, there's a threshold. I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but based on when we do a launch, we're allowed a certain number of people in Halama. And then we run a statistical analysis to say, are we, are we creating public safety risk that's, that's above a threshold, above what would be, what everyone would be comfortable with. And it's also being driven by the FAA license. So Federal Aviation Administration, for some of these launches, they provide a license, there's a threshold there. It's a federal license for these federal activities, but there's a threshold there from a public safety standpoint. As long as we keep the, as long as the number of campers that are there overnight is below a certain number, I think it's, you know, 200, 300, I'd have to give you the exact number, but there's some number. If we can keep the number of people at Halama below that threshold, which nighttime is the best time for that to happen, because we're just talking about campers, we're not talking about people that are there for lunch or enjoying the beach. June, July, August, that's, that's a factor.
Okay, so it sounds like during launch periods, the number of campers has to be reduced and I think it would be super, very helpful. I'm sorry, go ahead, Colonel.
I'm not saying that the number of, I'm not saying that the number of campers needs to be reduced. What I'm saying is that there's more campers at Halama during the summertime. And so, so we can avoid closing Halama, we won't launch during the day, we'll launch at night because, because from a safety standpoint, we can still meet the, we can still meet safety requirements without having to evacuate.
Because people aren't on the beach? Is that the reason?
Yes. There, there's day users that we can't account for because they don't need to make a reservation. So they come in and so we don't know what the day use numbers are going to be. And we, we do actively work with the Santa Barbara County staff at Halama Beach. That's how we've come up with a lot of these minimization measures as well, is through collaboration with their staff and understanding the beach users. And so all of those suggestions have actually come directly from them. And so what we've, yeah, what we do is we work with them ahead of time to see what the overnight camping numbers are and see if there is a potential need for evacuation. And then that's when they will notify their campers.
Yeah, so you can see the, I'm sorry, go ahead, please, Colonel.
I was just going to say that constant communication and collaboration between us and the Park Rangers is how we've been able to not close or impact Halama since last August.
Yeah, I mean, to me, what I'm thinking is potentially having county, the county parks department, having somebody dedicated to sort of working with you, following this, dealing with cancellations during, you know, trying to update you. So when I talk about mitigation for the county parks department, I think that's something that would be incorporated. And then we could potentially hear from that person about, from the county parks perspective, here is how it works, here is how it goes, and here is the, the impacts on access or the lack of impacts on access. And I think that would be, for me personally, that would be really helpful. Just a couple more quick things. I agree completely with Commissioner Kunkel on the impacts from the weather balloons. And thank you so much for your offer for additional mitigation for that impact. And just a final thing, several commissioners have indicated an interest in touring the facilities. And I know you're open to that. And I'll look forward to potentially that being scheduled and just letting the rest of the Commission know that we're hoping to schedule something. And again, I want to share the Commission's gratitude. I've heard from staff how great the relationship is, the working relationship with you. I know this is a difficult issue for you all. Everyone is restricted in what they can talk about, what they know, what they can say, et cetera. But the main thing is to have this continual, very good working relationship. On behalf of the Commission here, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you as well as to our staff and look forward to that relationship continuing. So on that note, this is an informational hearing, there is no vote required. We really appreciate your zooming in. I don't know if I don't know if we'll see you in person or not at the next meeting, but we sure hope we see a representative of SpaceX along with you. I know that. So thank you very much. Not seeing any other questions, I will close this hearing on the Vandenberg Space Force issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Hart.
Okay, I believe that's our last item. Wanted to, did you want to say something, Vice Chair? Our Vice Chair has a quick statement. Or maybe not quick.
I am done. I just first wanted to thank everybody for coming, for sort of, for being part of this, of this incredible adventure. But I wanted to make sure to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day, you know, or those who identify as mothers of communities or what, you know, here, those who love so much, they feel like a mother. So as a mother myself, it is one of the reasons why I do this, for sure. So I, and to our newest mom, well, this is why we love this baby, and the new grandbabies in the Sons Commission, of course, because grandmothers are the best moms. So thank you all, thank you so much for this wonderful.
Thanks, Vice Chair, and you've just been so awesome. What an incredible host, having us all to your house, that was just wonderful, and I know everyone appreciated all your planning. And thank you all so much for, for, this meeting up here has just been remarkable. It's just such an incredible place, just breathtaking. And again, to the Elk Valley Rancheria, we're so appreciative. I heard, I have been up to the casino each day looking for elk. I just wanted to let the chairman know that, because he told me they're always there. But so far, I haven't seen them, but I understand from my fellow commissioners, there was an entire group of elk outside of this building, and that I somehow missed the other day. So thanks so much to everybody. We'll look forward to seeing everyone next month in Morro Bay, and great meeting. Thank you.